Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the August 16th meeting of the Hyde Park Planning Board. Please take note of exits around the room in case of mishap and now join me as we reaffirm our loyalty to the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is a public hearing that's continued for the enclave at Hyde Park. The applicants are seeking site plan, subdivision, and special use permit to transform a 74 single-family unit subdivision into 25, or rather, 52 family homes, 25 lots. May I get a motion to reopen the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
May I also get a motion to open a new public hearing on the final subdivision plat for this as well?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
These will be running concurrently, obviously. Mr. Casaminto, Ms. Patty, Mr. Alexander, welcome back. I'll just open up the floor for you. Thank you again for being so responsive to all our comments last time. I think we're nearing consideration of approval for everything. There's three on there, so if people are here and interested, they haven't seen this application for the first time, there was a very sprawling and huge subdivision. It's now been tightened into a very condensed development. There's been a back and forth because this requires site plan about site plan elements, but we're down now to the really nitty-gritty details. So would you like to have the floor?
Good evening. Ken Casaminto for the record from LRC. We've received some of the comments from the board as well as the consultants, and Tad was able to get us a quick review for some of the stormwater items. Most of the items that we have, we can work out with the consultants. We did want to just go over a couple things. It is going to be concrete, even though the detail in the back was that last-minute discussion and I missed it.
Yeah, the sidewalks everywhere referred to as concrete. It just says "by two minutes concrete" on the detail, so they'll have to match, that's all.
We did get a letter from the fire department. The biggest item in the fire department letter was adding some of the notes for the existing cistern that's there and some of the changes that they wanted to see on that. We'll add that into the final plans. Rich from Morris Associates is here to talk about the architecture of the buildings as well, if you'd like to see some more of that. One of the items that we did discuss and was talked about was an elevation of the existing building that's going to be converted to the clubhouse. While we looked at it and we thought about taking a photo to put it in, knowing the current condition of the site, it wasn't really appropriate. But the owner has a site photo that's actually quite nice and clear, and we have multiple copies. I don't know if you want to include that as a separate item into the document for the...
This isn't my suggestion. As you know, site plan requires that we see elevations of all structures. This is already built, and I didn't want them to have to go back to whatever architect it was to try to find one, so I suggested they just simply put in a photo if that's acceptable to Ms. Moss and the board. It seems to be. Thank you.
We've been there anyway.
I'll just let Rich speak to some of the changes that we have to do. As it relates...
Welcome back.
Is that mic working?
As it relates to the clubhouse, one of the reasons that we were really not trying to change the front of the building is to keep it, you know, looking like a residential structure, not a commercial structure. So we have been, I've met with the building inspector out at the site. We have developed a preliminary floor plan to utilize the garage area and the first floor and basement of the residence. We're going to basically abandon the second floor and basically just use that as an attic and mechanical space. So with that being said, our main entrance is really going to be in the rear of the building, so we are going to provide handicap accessibility to that main level. There is also handicap accessibility to the basement with a walking path from the parking lot to the rear of the building, so that floor will also be handicap accessible. So again, so we tried to maintain that architecture of residential, single-family house look from the front. So that's why we're not proposing any changes to that.
No, no, it's, I think I emailed that to the rest of the board. It took me a while to go through, and I found the one that really describes everything. I couldn't figure what that sort of walking path in the rear was around the rain garden.
Right.
And then after talking to you, I realized, the building inspector, you need to have access to each floor that's handicap or ADA.
Correct.
And that's a very neat way to achieve it, and that means that you also switched the entrance over to by the parking area, so it's the shortest distance as well inside.
Correct, yeah. That would be the short distance from the handicap parking spaces that will be there.
Great. So while I have you, just a quick question. It came up at our agenda meeting. Are the garage doors going to be that light color as in the trim?
So, yes, we've revised the elevations, which will be, I guess, part of the next package.
It was just curiosity in terms of sales, because they seem to dominate the way they are, kind of light like that.
Yeah, we were going to leave the overhead doors white in all of the options.
I just suggested you talk to a realtor to see if they think that's the best sellable aspect of it, that's all.
One of the reasons that we were thinking of the white was maintenance. Most of the doors come white with the manufactured finish as white. There are options of getting different colors, but in lieu of having to paint them and then it be a maintenance issue for anybody buying it, we thought that having the consistent look of white would be a simpler. Now, that would be, these are just two of the color options. I have the other two on the backside.
Right.
That would be consistent on all four.
And you submitted those as well to us already?
We did, yes.
Thank you, Rich. Anything else?
Just two quick questions. Are the garage doors vinyl? Or they would? The garage doors are still...
We haven't selected the garage door yet, but it could be a metal clad is most likely what it would be.
And the siding?
The siding is a vinyl siding.
Thank you.
So before I turn over, start with the consultants. I'm just going to go down my list real quickly. First, you'll need to respond to a letter from Roosevelt. I spoke to the chief. He's on vacation in Canada today, so I was able to answer a couple of the points, but they're pretty small and minor. The board will need to, in the Morris Associates memo of March 6th, there were various waivers requested that we need to discuss and agree on tonight. I will point out that they recommended that we grant them at that meeting, and they're still requested in your response memo. The note on sheet PH114B, when we looked at it, you now have that if any unit in section B, which should be the far right...
Hold on, I have the base of the...
Sorry.
All right, all right. Chris, P.
Yeah, there you go. If one unit is sold, there are, all the sidewalks are put in the far right, but don't you want the sidewalks in A too, so they can walk back to the clubhouse? Or did I not read that correctly?
So here under B, if any phase between phases eight through 16 is constructed, both sidewalk A and sidewalk B, as well as parking lot A, would have to be constructed.
Constructed, okay, good.
So we tried to make it, and we worked with Pete's office to go back and forth with trying to get the language to make sure that if either this phase or this phase went prior to this, this walk would have to be put in.
Yeah, the phasing sounded great otherwise. Tad has still not determined or given me an answer. Sheet D into the typical additions in terms, so we don't have to have neighbors coming up or residents coming in for site plan amendments, whether the verbal descriptions are acceptable. You don't have to decide tonight. I just want to make sure if you want some pictures to say with equivalent or not, or if the descriptions are fine, we just need to resolve that, because I'd like to have as few conditions of approval as possible, and it looks like you're already requesting a lot from your memo. I'll get to you in a minute, Tad, don't worry. Then we worked out the by-two minutes concrete or the asphalt. Victoria will discuss this, but I believe she believes the drainage district should form prior to the offer of session. Ms. Polidoro sent out, I believe, a comment letter today that you'll need to respond to as well from Rodenhausen Schall. The, you have, there's been a discussion about the tabular summary being on the site plan and on the subdivision. I'll let Victoria handle that. I know you requested it just stay kind of independent out there. In your response memo of August 4th, 2017, page 19, or point 19, we're looking at grading and when you would grade, and the response was that you would grade, because HOA owns it, you would always be able to enter onto the HOA lands to grade. We were thinking the agenda meeting that if somehow, and I hope it doesn't happen, but this got foreclosed on for back taxes or something, and people bought individual lots, we'd need cross-access agreements somehow to be formed so that you could still build on your lot, because we're not going to grade the whole site at one time. Mr. Alexander's looking very perplexed there, but we can't rely on HOA always being there to say you can come onto the end of the property. We'll have to have some sort of cross-access agreements, I believe, just to plan for the future, because we don't know how soon the market would hit on this.
It makes total sense.
And I'm sorry I didn't copy you on, I don't believe I even put that out, but I did copy you on the memo, Mr. Alexander. Again, noted, there's lots of conditions for final approval that are requested. And last, when I looked at sheet SL1 and then reviewed our notes from the past, I thought that back in April, we discussed that you'd need bus shelters for the schoolchildren, and that you might have central mailboxes, and those are still not shown.
Yes, the mailboxes, yeah, but the bus shelter wasn't...
You're not going to require it?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, good. So you'll still need to sell the mailboxes?
Yes.
So, good, okay. That's all I had. As I said, everything else were coming along. Let me start to my left. Ms. Moss, any comments? Okay.
To know something about the coordinated amenities that could be installed on each lot, I think Mr. Casaminto wanted to say something.
So we did talk after the brief discussion with the owner, and at your idea, we did have Nicole went and prepared, and I wanted to see if this would be acceptable.
Basically, the idea of that, putting descriptions, but not necessarily a model.
Right, with equivalence, equivalence, whatever. Great.
There are several options, but as we said, we don't want to have just one.
Thank you.
The fencing, I thought your descriptions were good on, actually. It was the lighting that I wasn't sure Ms. Moss would know how to interpret, but you guys can have a discussion about that later on. Ms. Moss, when do you go on?
These seem fine for the fencing.
Okay. Then you may want to consider something for the lighting.
Would this be part of the application?
We would put that on the plan. As DN2, it would be on the plan, so it would be included in the details, the approved plan set for the next submission.
Right, and you probably want to add the words, or equivalent, or typical.
Yes, yeah.
I can't even hear you. The microphone's not going to be picking up as well.
I was saying, just to explicitly state that these are just typical examples.
Right. Mrs. Sotero, any comments?
Well, we reviewed the latest submission that they made. We had a comment memo, I believe it was August the 1st. They've addressed most of our comments. I sent out an email Monday to Michael, Tad, and Victoria and the applicants. I just had very, very, very few comments left. We'll put those in a memo. I'm going to incorporate some comments that Tad had today on the stormwater pollution prevention plan. Doesn't appear like there's anything too major on that, so depending on anything else that comes up at the meeting tonight, we'll incorporate that in a memo. And one of our, one of our comments, and the chairman had already had mentioned this about the planning board should review the waivers, but you mentioned that, you know, already. And Ken and I are going to be, and we're not going to look to do conditional final until the September meeting. We'll work on a bond estimate prior to that, so that at September, at the September 6th meeting, I could have a recommendation to the planning board to act on that. And I think that's about it. I think that Victoria has the lion's share of the work with all the legal documents, so that's about it on our end.
So you're going to take the, looks like maybe seven points, and incorporate these into a memo?
Seven points in...
Your email?
Yes, and then I'm also going to incorporate Tad's stuff.
Okay, I just wanted to say, the street tree phasing plan, I think we've got down.
Yes.
Misread it at first, so you already have that down perfectly. Thank you.
Yes.
And let me give a plug for LRC. It's a pleasure working with you guys, because you're so responsive to everything, as well as the attorney's firm.
Now, I guess, one thing that I wanted to, one thing that I wanted to bring up quick was, the last thing in my, in my email is, you know, we're trying not to have as, we're trying to have as few conditions as possible. So I think there'll be some updates to the plans, but in my opinion, I don't think it's necessary for them to reproduce this whole set all over again, because it's a lot of maps in there. So if the planning board is okay with this, what I was thinking is that, is that whatever sheets got revised, if you would trust that the consultants would just look at them to make sure that they're okay, so that at September 6th, you know, we could say, okay, that condition was addressed, that condition was like addressed, rather than reproducing, because these sets are big.
Our board, would you like to have half, half sizes, the little small sizes, or is it easier just to rely on the consultants?
We'll rely on them.
I mean, it's up to the board, it's just...
At this point, I think, just...
We're talking, I mean, I think for the most part, we're talking...
No, 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 just make sure, make sure I have the big size too, because you know me with the...
Yeah, we're talking about minor changes, you know.
I agree.
They're nothing substantial, so. And I guess as far as the landscaping plan, I know you and, you and Tad are the resident experts here on the landscaping.
I wouldn't go that far, but I looked at all the plants, and I haven't seen anything that I would disapprove of at all.
Okay.
And I want to also just weigh in myself, that I, given the fact that our consultants have recommended that we grant the waiver requests, and they mostly show isolated trees, it's small stuff, I think we're fine with all that as well. I'll be asking each member to weigh in on that. Thank you, Mr. Sotero. Ms. Polidoro?
I reviewed the plans against the approval resolution, so I really focused only on the subdivision plan, and I gave the board a copy of my memo today, so there are still some conditions that need to be satisfied. I do recommend that, one, two, three, four, almost 10 of the conditions be carried over to be conditions of final approval.
I saw.
They'll have to, we'll have to continue working on those, but I do think the others should be addressed prior to approval.
Did you receive a copy of the memo? Yes?
We did.
Thank you.
I have a couple of quick questions.
Sure.
Relative to, if I would. We do identify, and we always have, as the solar parcel. And just for the same reasoning of saying proposed, because it's not, it isn't existing, and nothing is before the board or anybody for that, can we just remove that entirely and call it Lot 26?
Yes.
And then there's no reference to anything that isn't there?
Yes.
Okay, so that's what we would propose to do, rather than do that.
That's fine. I just, I just don't want to give it the, you know, the...
Agreed. Couldn't agree more. One of the other items that you wrote, and I don't know if it's semantics of words or not, but I wanted to just check with you, is on the plat file, we don't typically show anything for the roads, the sidewalks, or any of that. So, because that is subdivision, and that is the lot lines and easements, so you've referred to...
So that was a question for the planning board, because that's what the resolution said. That was the condition in the resolution, so it's up to the planning board and Pete and Tad really if they want to see the lines for the sidewalks and the roads on the plat, or if it's okay to keep that only on the site plan.
Is there a reason why that was made a condition in the resolution? Is there something preferable to having it shown on both?
I mean, just to show the sidewalks are in the right of way, but...
What was that?
It's up to them.
You want to speak, or?
I don't know. I'm just thinking that if there's a proposed dedication of the town road and the sidewalks...
I can't hear you.
Yeah, I can't. Just move it to...
It doesn't bite.
I was just thinking that if there's a proposed dedication of town improvements that are to be constructed by the developer, if the sidewalk is part of that, I would think it would be on the plat map for subdivision? Is that...
Subdivision, I mean, we don't show any of the houses, we don't show any of that.
No, no. Those wouldn't be dedicated to the town. The sidewalk?
But the sidewalks aren't dedicated to the town either.
No, they're going, that's...
Yeah, the sidewalks are going to be within the right of way.
But they're not dedicated to the town?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, they're going to be dedicated to the town. The maintenance of them is going to be...
Microphone, great.
Okay.
So, the maintenance, right, the maintenance of the sidewalks is a whole nother issue, but, so the reason, the reason it's in that, the reason it was in the condition is because anything within the right of way is going to be offered for dedication to the town. So it's up to the town, that's why I said consider whether it's adequate, you know, whether they want to see the lines for the sidewalks on the subdivision plat, so it's clear to everyone that that's what's being conveyed. So we can continue, we don't need a decision right now on that.
Well, the only, the only thing that I would add to that, I mean, if, then we should show the utilities.
Right.
We should show like a lot of things. I mean, I honestly, usually like a plat is just for, you know, property lines, easements, but I guess we can discuss it, but I personally don't think we need to show, you know, the sidewalk on a plat. But we can, we can discuss that offline, I guess.
I think that's a good idea. The reason why is we're not going to come to a conclusion probably tonight. I see benefits to both, and there will, there are multiple, the benefit of the audience, because this is a two-family, these are two-family units in the green belt where we don't normally have this kind of density, this requires additional permits, a special use permit, it requires site plan as well, so site plan is typically more commercial rather than residential, yep. So we're just trying to make sure we have enough papers filed that they can all agree with one another, basically, that's all. And we don't want to make you go to too much, go through hoops either. I will add that also, our attorney, Ms. Polidoro, sent a memo to the town board asking them how we should handle this best in terms of having the HOA maintain a sidewalk that's in the town right of way. It appears that maybe a local law will be passed. I spoke to the supervisor, and they're very receptive to it, because they would like to see this project happen and thrive as well, and bring new residents into the community. So, thank you. Anything else?
That's it.
You start to my right, Ms. DeNaple, any comments?
I already asked my questions, thank you.
Ms. Dexter?
No, I'm just happy to see that we're at this point, and it really does look like it's all come together, and thank you very much.
Mr. Pickett?
Glad to see you moving forward. My two issues at least remaining are school buses and the mailboxes, and in the school buses, with the type of residences, is you may have a lot of school kids in there, so...
Well, I mean, there are only two bedrooms.
Pardon, optional three?
Yeah, third bedroom is optional, but his market is not to student, that age group, families, you know, more of an empty nest, as well as the new family type thing. So there may be there, but he's not looking to put that as part of it, because he does not, that's not as part of his model.
I think the better, the better way to answer that is, when you went to the school district, they will go inside the neighborhood, or they, the kids will congregate to the outside?
No, no.
It's always possible for a grandparent to have a child, a grandchild living with him or her, so we're just trying to make sure that there's a way for students to safely wait for the buses, so...
Seen in other residences where they use the clubhouse as a pickup point, or the parking lot in the clubhouse as a pickup point. Is that doable?
It totally is doable. It's a little bit of a walk-up, but it's not far at all.
Okay.
And I presume, in the next iteration, I presume we'll see as part of site plan the mailboxes, wherever you want them to go, the central mailboxes. I'm glad that, that time I spent in my review was good then, yes.
That was my second point. You've seen some places where mailboxes are put out, and they're just ugly, you know, but they could be incorporated somehow, you know, in the parking lots where they're visible from the resident side, not the highway side.
We've had the discussion with the post office, and they are going to actually require that we do a shelter for the mailboxes, so it will look a little nicer than just metal mailboxes on the, on the side of the road.
Got it.
Well, we need to see what they look like?
Yeah, you'll need to show that elevation. It's similar to River Ridge, which is most of the people who are gathered behind you, they live in that neighborhood. We worked with them as well on locations and what it would look like at the time.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Pickett. Mr. Murphy?
This might have slid by me, but the clubhouse, when will it be completed, and, you know, at what point will the clubhouse be occupiable?
The intent is to complete it on part of the beginning phases of the project.
First, first phase, phase one?
Yes.
Yes.
Because we don't want...
It's labeled as phase one. We don't want this to happen to, what's happening to the neighbors behind you. In addition, this structure is already built, but I, you won't be staying to hear my long bit of history for the subdivision behind you, River Ridge, but again, when you are, since it's a site plan and you're phasing it, so make sure you're aware that if you tie everything into one building permit and it's one site plan, remember the bocce ball, the pool, everything has to be done before you get a CO on it, so that's all. And I believe it's Mr. Mermelstein, the project sponsor's intention to do the clubhouse and maybe build one demonstration model, or I guess, two families, two families?
Yeah, he's looking to start the first model, hopefully this fall, so that by spring, at the latest, he has a model there, so he can, we can get a real good gauge of where the market is, and hopefully just continue right through.
I'm going to cross my fingers, use my southern accent real strong, that you get to do that this fall, because when I looked at your letter and saw how many conditions of final approval you have, there's still a lot listed, so...
Department of Health is there. We've had meetings where, you know, the documents are going right in as we speak.
Good, good.
And DPW, we've talked to them, it's being a reduction of the actual change in the size, so they weren't as concerned, we didn't have the, we don't have the turn-in lane, so we're actually turning, talking about potentially making it more of a traditional commercial access instead of the big wide access, and removing some of the asphalt that's up there potentially, because there's no need to have the pull-offs and the turn-ins like we were planning with the widening, since that's not going to be present, which will help alleviate some of the other concerns as well.
That's great. That's great. Ms. Kane, any comments?
I'm just, I'm so happy about how this project has progressed. It's great for the town that we have this area that was abandoned, and it's being redeveloped very nicely. Thank you.
Would anyone from the public like to speak about this application? Any other comments from you guys? So we're going to work behind the scenes? You're going to just give large sets of what the revisions are?
Yes.
One of them will be the site plan to show the elevations, and it's...
Yeah, we'll submit the required amount to you, just of the sheets though, that we're doing, not the entire set.
I'm not sure you have to do all of, all the requirements for all the rest of the board, unless, I hear...
No, just for the consultants in the file, right?
So we'll do four full-size...
And the chair, and the chair.
And the chair.
Five full-size copies.
Any other comments over there? Ms. Moss, anything?
I just want to make it clear that those are not the sets that will be signed.
Of course, that's a full size. No, and that's not until all the conditions are met as well. So if you guys can work on the bond estimate, because I think that there's a lot that may go into that.
Well, we'll have to talk to the town attorney as well about how, we'll have to have a discussion with the town attorney about the estimate and...
The form or substance?
Right, and whether we want to include a very specific number on the resolution or something more flexible, so we'll, we'll have that discussion before the next meeting.
Okay, you'll talk to the town attorney?
Mm-hmm.
Because I like to do flexibility if it allows you guys an easier path forward.
Right.
In the meantime, Mr. Alexander, Cuddy Fader, I forgot to mention your esteemed firm, you and Ms. Polidoro have some dialoguing to do back and forth, I can tell, to get through some of these conditions, because I really would like to reduce the number of conditions as much as possible. It allows you to go more quickly to get that demonstration house built. So if there are any other comments, make it a motion to continue the public hearing to September 6th?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we've got our work cut out of us, but we'll see. Okay, we've got our work cut out of us, but we'll see. Happy Labor Day in advance.
Bye.
The next item on the agenda is Wright Homes Re-subdivision. Ah, you are here.
Hmm, yep.
I never wanted.
So, Wright Homes Re-subdivision is for a location on Reservoir Road. This was a previous action by the planning board to take a single lot and turn it into three lots for residential homes with a shared driveway. The applicant originally proposed doing three driveways and changing the lot lines after a lot of public comment last time, as well as rethinking, rejiggering of what was involved, which would include removal of a lot of trees, removal of rocks, and a never explained idea of who would hold the sightline easement. Mr. Martin, the project's engineer, project owner's engineer, looked at everything, came back, and now they've re-proposed a revision that in essence is, adheres much more closely to the original subdivision that was granted. There is a single driveway proposed for two of the lots, three really branching off, and they've relocated the home to the far right or the far east, has been relocated from what was approved before, but the other two homes essentially haven't changed. This doesn't, you've returned the open space to the area where neighbors testified that there was a spring coming out of and the trees, et cetera.
We kept the open spaces. It was on the first approval.
It's all gone back. So, I think this is, this responds to certainly what we heard last time from the neighbors. And again, it also avoids the sightline problem and the easement that was going to have to be created, et cetera. Mr. Martin, let me turn it over to you and welcome back.
Uh, yes, good evening. You couldn't have said it better. But, yeah, as a result, after, after the last meeting, Mr. Zbelski and I, we met and we reviewed, you know, what we heard and where we are, and, and he's anxious to, to move ahead. So, essentially, the, the, the area back here, this house area here was moved up in front, which is always what he wanted to do.
Mm-hmm.
The common driveway is back where it was before, although in a slightly different alignment.
Right.
Essentially here, once it gets back here, it's all the same. And the only other thing we did, and unfortunately, I just realized this tonight, the old farm lane, it for some reason, the, the limits of it didn't print, but the old farm lane, we put that totally on lot one.
Exactly.
And, and I think the best way to see it, look on the subdivision plot, there you can, it's a little more clear on the first page as opposed to this page. And what we, what we wanted to do is keep that old farm lane totally with this larger lot. We're kind of considering it like in a state lot.
This late lot.
And the other thing we did is the rear, up in here, you have all these old stone wall fences. What we did is before the stone wa, the property line came back and then kind of dog-legged over, we took this new line, went back to the stone wall, and now we follow the stone wall completely to the center of the power line. So, that's really the only changes that we made. The geometric shape of lot three stays the same and, and of course the house side area as well, as I previously mentioned.
Thank you. Anything else you want to mention?
That's it.
Then before I go to the consultants, let me get a motion to reopen this public hearing?
Move.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Ms. Moss, any comments?
No.
Thank you for coming tonight. We haven't seen you in a while. You're gracing our presence. Mr. Sotero?
Uh, yeah, a couple of things. Ernie and I had a conversation a few days ago. Um, you know, I think, I think with this going back to pretty much to the original plan with some, uh, minor changes like moving the house on lot three closer, closer to the road, I think that should allay, you know, the concerns in terms of, you know, blasting and, you know, impacts on wells and such like that. So, again, there'll be some common driveway easements that'll have to be, you know, submitted because if they are, um, the common driveway that will service lot two and lot number one are a little bit, little bit different than, you know, before. So, but that's something that's, you know, minor. You know, Ernie had mentioned about, one of the changes that was made was that the farm road is now incorporated on lot number one. And I sent around an email and Ernie and I had talked about this, that I'd like to see a note put on the map that basically says that any, any, any future change to driveway locations from the approved plot would have to come back to the planning board for approval. You know, I'm not saying that this is, you know, the case, but, you know, with the farm road now being solely on lot number one, there is, you know, the potential for in the future for the applicant to possibly look to see if they could get like a driveway, like again, at that like location and, you know, so we should just make future highway superintendents, future, future planning boards, you know, aware that if any changes to, you know, the driveways would have to require planning board approval again. So, you know, we'll write that up, but that was something I sent around in an email and Ernie and I had discussed.
The only thing I would, I would add to that or, or comment to that is that, that that driveway for a good portion of it goes, or that old farm road for a good portion goes through that concept, that open space area.
That was exactly my response to Mrs. Sotero. I said, "Good catch, but it's an open space." However, we've asked since day one for the open space easement and we still haven't received it, so we need to see what the language in the open space easement says.
Oh, the previous one?
Yep.
Okay.
That's all.
Okay, yeah.
That's why there's no new easement, but there's no new easement.
A little more reading.
Yeah, you didn't, you didn't see my response back to you, but I said, "Great catch, but they'd have to violate basically the open space terms," I believe.
I didn't get past, you know, the first one. Good catch, I guess.
Yeah, your ADD was kicking in today on lots of those emails that were long, I see, right?
Yeah, there was, there was, you know, some long ones today, yep.
Any other comments?
No.
Ms. Polidoro?
I haven't had a chance to review the new plans.
That's a good point.
Um, is, does the new driveway location, is it gonna require blasting?
No.
No.
No?
They've got a driveway, a driveway profile, and I think if I'm not mistaken, it pretty, for the most part, follows existing grade, for the most part, with some filling. So, um, excuse me, um, Tad just, just whispered. We'll have to get the fire department to look at, and I don't remember if, that it's, if they did this before, but the driveway back to lot number one is, you know, fairly long, so there may need to be incorporated some pull-outs, um, you know, on there. Usually when we get a driveway over a certain length of, you know, the fire department likes to see pull-outs. So, I think that's Statsburg up there.
It is.
If I'm not mistaken.
And they're not the easiest to reach by phone?
Well, why don't, I, I suggest the board refer both to the fire inspector, the town fire inspector, as well as the fire department, because the fire inspector should also know the fire code.
Okay.
To have some of this coming.
I don't remember the length. I think it's over 500 feet. Then there has to be every 150 or something, there has to be a turnaround.
Yeah.
A pull-off?
Something like that.
A pull-off, okay. Any other comments?
No.
That's it. Ms. Polidoro, does that seem like a reasonable note to put on the map too, that any future driveway would require that, just in case?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Let me search for my left. Ms. Kane, any comments?
Um, I'm happy to see the driveway moved back to this location. Um, and that's about it. I, I'm, I think the pull-offs for the fire department are a good idea.
Thank you.
Definitely a safety issue.
Thank you. Mr. Murphy?
No, no comments. I'm happy to see it back the way it was. It's peace in the neighborhood.
Thank you. Mr. Pickett?
No comment. Dito to his comments.
Ms. Dexter?
Thank you very much for listening to the neighbors and trying to work with them. I think this is a much better plan. It's very close to the previously approved plan. Um, Ernie, would you mind, we're sitting here trying to understand all the septics and trying to figure out which ones, especially down the front, go with which houses and, and are, are, are you showing like where one was for the original plan and then what the new one is or?
Are you, which plan are you looking at, two?
That, we're looking at that plan.
Okay. This, for lot one, that septic is as was approved. That's not changing.
Okay, okay.
For a lot, and that's, what we're showing here is primary and reserve area.
Right.
Expansion.
On, on lot two, again, primary and reserve area.
Ah, okay.
Not changing from the original plan.
Okay.
Okay. Lot three, it is changing. It was back here.
Right.
It's now moving up here, but we're splitting it because again, we have to have primary and reserve and, you know, we need room to do all this other stuff.
Okay. Thank you very much.
It is confusing because normally when we see the expansion, we see the bed and the expansion right next to it.
Right.
So, in this case, they've, they've separated. The important thing is, even though it's called a hundred-foot expansion, it's really, in case one fails, you have another septic field in which to operate in. So, it's not really an expansion. You would just abandon one and use the other if I understand correctly.
Yeah, and the health department for maybe the last five years now, you're right, we used to put them back-to-back and we, and still many times do. However, if they, if it's a fill system and they're back-to-back, the health department now is requiring that the fill for the both, not only the primary and the reserve area, have to be built at the same time. So, all of a sudden now your costs will go tremendously. So, well, that's why, that's why if you look on lot one, you can see there's a little separation there. So, in that case, you only have to put the primary in, but, but if they were back-to-back, then you'd have to put both in. And usually the cost on a septic, the largest cost is usually the fill.
Yeah, I know. That's a lot. I didn't know that. Thank you for edifying us that way.
Yes.
Any other comments?
Uh, no, I'm just, it looks much better. Oh, but I did want to find out, I would still like to walk the property. We didn't, we didn't set anything up, I don't think.
No, because that, when, when we changed this radically, I thought it'd be sort of prudent for us to see what we were looking at before we decided to go tromp all over the property. And it's been a while since we were visiting it. So, anyway, Ms. DiNapoli, comments?
I would like to join in on that walk of the property if permissible. Thank you very much, sir. I am very happy to see the changes. I'm sure you are relieved that the board is happy to see the changes and, and I wish you well. And I think this is really the best for what you are hoping to do with the property, to get to what you would like to accomplish. And thank you.
Would anyone from the public like to speak about this application? Come on up. Do you mind moving to the side so that someone can speak? And please state your name for the record. I don't believe we've seen you before, although I, I think I can guess who you are. Mr. Utter, maybe?
Yes. My name is George Utter and I live on 83 Reservoir Road. And I too would like to thank Stanley for changes to the driveway. I think that it was the best thing to do, especially from a safety point of view. Often, we tend to forget what's happened in, in years past on Reservoir Road and then particularly within the vicinity of where that driveway was going to be proposed to go in. Some over 50 years ago, a young child on a bicycle was hit by a car and perished as a result of that. And I am very concerned about the safety of Reservoir Road as well as I'm sure that the board here is concerned about the safety of all the town roads when we consider about putting a driveway at a dangerous intersection. So, I also, once again, I would like to thank you very much for changing that location of the driveway. I would also like to add a, add a question, and that is that where the septic fields have been placed are in pockets of dirt and apparently the, a perk test passed and that's all good. However, along the west side of the line and where the ditch is, there's a lot of rock crop through there. And my thought where I'm leading here is, is that are there going to be full basements in this house? And if so, will that require, that, that it would be any kind of blasting or anything to put in a full basement because the rock crop extends all through that area? So, that's a question that I, that I have as far as putting in foundations and, and through that ledge area, as it has been discussed before, there are springs. And even throughout that whole general area, the water table is very low, so far as that it comes, in many areas, it comes up to the ground. So, that, that is, that is one, one of my concerns.
Thank you. That's a valid concern.
Um, and, and another thing that I would like to, like to say that, just for the record, our particular area has many amphibians of many sorts throughout four or five different properties, at least in that area. We are very blessed insofar as that we have a lot of black dirt into that area, which I think is something that we should look to maintain. Who knows, somewhere's down the line when we may be required to use that land for gardens as once it was. Charlie Marr had a farm on the top of where the driveway, and he, as I remember it, boy, was all ditched out and it was used for vegetables, excuse me. As well as across the street from me was another location where black dirt exists and it was also gardened out. And I also have black dirt, which I do garden and maintain the ditches. Those ditches many years ago were dug out by oxen and many of those ditches today are non-existent, but some of them are still maintained, but very few of them. So, I just think that as a, as a canary in the mine, when you have amphibians living in your area, they are one of the first ones to pick up pollution and are the first ones to disappear. And so, I think that I would suggest to the board that any kind of future thoughts about development in the area would be considering that this is a good land that can be used in the future if need be for many garden purposes. I'd say probably in, in excess of, if you put all the properties together, probably 10 acres of, of black dirt.
You're very lucky you have black dirt. Orange County is rife with it. We don't have a lot over here, which is why, particularly in our area, in Hyde Park, we don't have a lot of farms because our soil's not really suitable for that.
Mm-hmm.
So, you're very fortunate. And we can, I, I believe that in the EAF, we did not, in the original secret determination, that wasn't listed there was going to be blasting. We have to go back and look, but I don't believe that that was ever considered.
I have to go back and look, but I don't believe so.
But typically, planning boards, so the way we look at this is, our purview is what I call limited to the outside of a building. So, we look at impacts on traffic, water sources, a lot of those things. And as part of that, we look at whether there'll be blasting or rock removal required. But if there's going to be full basements, we don't usually make that request or ask that. We can, but it's not something that we're usually told. We're looking more at how the house fits into the site and the soil characteristics, the suitability of its development for housing in a subdivision like this. We do look into a little bit more when it comes to commercial sites because they're usually larger, et cetera. But those are great comments and I appreciate you coming out. Anything else you'd like to add?
No, I have nothing else to add. I would just like to say that I appreciate having the opportunity to speak before the board.
And we appreciate you coming out.
And I do appreciate all the effort that you take and the time that you take from your personal lives. And I'm sure you know exactly what I mean. Anytime anybody goes forward and, and tries to take the time to, to plan for what's going to be going on to the future, because you're, 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 you're looking beyond where any of us may see in the future.
We're trying, that's why...
So, I do appreciate, I do, I do appreciate your efforts.
That's why you heard us talk about, the, the HOA may not exist in that last house. You can't just say, "Well, the HOAs, they'll always grant the rights to go onto someone else's property." Not if it, I mean, I don't want to, I want that subdivision to thrive and work well, but in today's market, you never know. So, if this horse came as the worst and it can't went to, got sold for individual parcels, we can't limit the ability of someone to build on it by saying you can't go onto someone else's property. So, you don't have to have cross-access agreements. That's what happens when these complicated large subdivisions happen. And maybe that's a silver lining, that most of us have been up here since before the Great Recession, so we've had a chance to now think about the future isn't always going to be rosy and what happens. And by the way, your letter was very eloquent, your initial letter, talking about your family and taking the oxen to dig and work the land, its inability, et cetera. So, it's a pleasure to meet you tonight.
Well, thank you very much. I've, I've been very fortunate and blessed to, with my family and, and I do happen to know a little bit about the area. So, if for some reason you ever have a, a question, I'm free to.
Thank you for sharing.
When we do our subway, we may stop over there and knock on your door and say hello.
Great.
Thank you very much. Anyone, anyone else like to speak? Come on up.
Brian Elliott.
Please have a seat. Welcome back, Mr. Elliott.
And I'm not going to take a lot of time. I also want to thank you for changing your site plan. I want to know, I appreciate it. And the only thing that I had a question about, because I sometimes don't, I get a little confused, was that the area down below here with that, the old farm road, is now designated as a...
A portion of it is permanent open space.
Like open space, right?
Right. And so, the purpose of open spa, the, in the, the way our code works is in this district greenbelt, when you're doing a subdivision, if you're creating a new lot that would have a house on it, you have to have 30% of the parent parcel conserve as open space. And by conserve, what we mean is, is it's, there's a permanent deed restriction placed on it. So, it, what it does allow is what's called passive recreation, meaning it doesn't stop someone who lives adjacent to it from going through meaning it doesn't stop someone who lives adjacent to it from going through the parcel just to walk through the woods. But they're not allowed to do certain things such as remove trees, blast. It can't be denuded. The purpose of open space, there are multiple reasons for it. They have to show conservation value. And in this case, when we did the original subdivision, this, even though we were required to make sure that open space stays contiguous to provide corridors, so for animal movement. In this case, there's a lot of open space right now behind it. The parcel that's to the rear, there's a big house, I think, way back there. I remember seeing it when we did the sidewalk. So this would connect to other open space to allow movement of animals. And so this, that's why when Pete had made the point about what if they try to use that as the driveway, they couldn't really because it would mean going in and doing construction work.
That was my concern. And that's what I wasn't understanding. It is, it actually is a corridor that the animals use to come from a reservoir and then move down through our place. That's how they get around. And being that this is, now, that's my thing. It seems like it's getting put to rest. If a new homeowner came in and buys that, they could in the future push this driveway and that wasn't required. That's my biggest concern.
Someone could try. So we're going to ensure that there are sufficient notes on the plat to alert...
Microphone?
It needs to be closer tonight, sorry.
Someone could try to turn that into a driveway in the future because common driveway disputes are very common. But we're going to make sure that there's enough notes and restrictions on the plat that anyone who pulls it out and looks at it will be able to tell that it's just not permitted.
Okay. And that's my main concern, really. And then one other thing, and George brought it up, is that is a rock ledge that runs all up underneath those two house sites. Now, I don't know about, I know, didn't occur to me, but about the basements. And he might very well be able to dig it right out, not a problem. But then if it goes into blasting, back onto that shelf of rock that runs right down underneath my house, right down through the neighborhood. So that was the only other thing that I wanted to bring up.
Right. What we would have to rely on ourselves is what's provided by the applicants in an environmental assessment form. And unless I'm wrong, I believe that they checked that there would be no blasting.
We'll have to ask them to update.
Right, right.
Okay. And you're going to be taking a walk. And when you do, you'll see exactly what we're talking about.
Believe me, I remember the site. There's areas where the soil to bedrock is non-existent.
Right, no. It's solid rock.
So, but I also know that there, you know, it's possible to put houses, you know, slab-on-grade. My own house is old, but, and I have a sort of basement because I'm on a rock line. It would be suitable for Quasimodo, the hunchback of Notre Dame only. You can't stand up in it. It's pretty limited.
Yeah, mine too, mine too. It's a five-foot crawl space.
Yep, crawl space, really. So, yeah. But at any rate, we'll discuss that with the applicant when he comes back up.
Yeah, okay. And I wish him the very best, I really do. Hopefully, it'll all work out and the community will be nice.
I want to just say that from the Board's perspective, this is why we have public hearings. We get more information when we have neighbors who live next door to us, giving us, you know, what their personal experiences are from living there every day and knowing what we don't always see. Particularly when it comes from a historical perspective, if your family's been there, both of you guys have been for a long, long time. You know more than what the Board does just by looking at a plat. Even by a sidewalk, we can't see everything. Because I didn't remember seeing a spring when I was there. And I pretty much climbed over the whole place. So, but I do remember there being a lot of rock on the site itself. So, anyway, thanks for coming out. Like I said, this is what helps shape better projects in the end.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thanks. Anyone else want to speak about this application? Gentlemen, you want to come back up? Mr. Martin? Mr. Debelski? Would you like to address the idea of the basements?
Well, as, a couple of things. As I recall, I believe in the EAF, I said, I think we said to represent there would be no blasting.
Right.
And typically, and I may have mentioned this before, Mr. Debelski is also not only the owner, but he is the builder. And I know, we've talked about this in from previous projects that I've worked on with him. He's got hydraulic hammers and all that. So, you know, there's no plan for blasting. And even if you did, I believe you've got to put together a plan and submit it to the town. Has to be approved anyway.
You do. I was going to mention that.
Right, well, so because of the unique circumstances with the rock going across the street, I think that's something the Board would want to know now if you were going to blast, so that they can consider the impacts.
No, I'm not going to blast, I'm not anything.
Okay.
Thank you.
I don't have a plan to blast, I am not going to blast.
Okay, no blasting.
Thank you. So, Board, I feel as though that we've made great progress now. And we've been entertaining this application for a while, as it's had various revisions. But I think we've come up with something that looks reasonable at this point. For that matter, when I look back, we originally had this application November 2nd.
Wow.
So then we saw it in January and February and then we didn't see them back again until June, while they were making revisions. So it would appear that we're getting closer to be accepting for final plat, I believe. So, do you want to be issuing a memo on this, or?
Yeah, I mean, it's going to have just, you know, a few comments, but yes.
To look at the driveway profile to make sure that there's...
Yes, yes. Ernie, one more thing that we were talking about here. Is there any way you could try to clean up the property lines? It's kind of hard to tell what's property lines versus the open space area.
I mean, on the page one, the plat part?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Because we've got, you know, meets and bounds that are on the open space areas. And, I don't know, maybe you could have a different, like, symbol for the property lines or something like that. A different line type or something. I don't know, it's just, it's a little confusing.
Yeah, we'll clean it up. And of course, as you know, we're required for, even to file it, there's certain standards that we have to meet at the county clerk's office.
Yep. But I think we probably would be in a position at the September 6 meeting, as long as the Board's all right to consider conditional final.
Everyone okay?
I'm good with that.
There ought to be some common driveway easements, you know, submitted. But that's, we can make that a condition.
So when you reviewed, Ms. Pollard, when you reviewed the open space, I know, I'm sorry. I just realized, of course, yes. For the audience's edification, Ms. Pollard is with child, as we used to say. So she's sitting back on her back, which is why I can't hear you all the time now. So at any rate, when you review the original easements, you don't keep a copy of them, right, in your files or anything, or do you?
I do, but I don't recall reviewing, I don't think I have ever reviewed this project.
This was, actually, I went back and looked because I had plotted out the original subdivision map. And I was surprised, this was back in 2007 when I first started this. I don't remember when we conditionally approved it, but I don't think it...
It wasn't that long.
It was. It was a while ago.
So ten years ago, in other words.
Ten years ago.
Yes, it seems like just yesterday, doesn't it? So what we'll do is make it a motion to continue the public hearing to September 6th.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then we'll work on this as a combined team to see if we can get us to a place where we have all the conditions specified, et cetera.
And a sidewalk?
When would you like to schedule the sidewalk?
Sometime between now and September 6th.
Mr. Martin, I'll email you, or do you want to try to do it tonight? Because I don't have my calendar in front of me.
I mean, we can do it like after work or a weekend.
Yeah.
Do you guys want to try a weekend or weekday after work?
Either or.
It's getting a little close on time, but I mean, if we can, everybody gets around five, it's starting to get dark earlier.
Just late in the afternoon?
Late in the afternoon is okay with you for a weekday? Then let me do, I'll do an email out to everybody and we'll set a date.
Okay.
I'm sorry, did we get, did I continue this to September 6th?
Yes, we did.
Yes, we did, thank you. Okay, then, we'll see when we set up a site visit. And we'll see the neighbors, I hope, when we're there. I know where you live now pretty easily. I've looked at this a lot. And in the meantime, if you guys could get us a copy of the, or get Ms. Pollard a copy of the easement.
We'll leave that out.
Okay, thank you. And we'll see you in a few weeks. Happy Labor Day in advance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is River Ridge. The applicants are seeking two extensions. To give a bit of history, we, this was approved prior to my joining the planning board, prior to most of us. And at some point in the overall site plan, the clubhouse, the recreational amenities, I'll call it, were dropped. When that got put back in, it was done separately. So we've had two site plans going, and they weren't running concurrently. They will now be doing that because we've had a request for the extension of site plan to complete construction for the rec center, as well as an extension of site plan approval to complete construction for the town homes. Make it a motion to open both public hearings simultaneously.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Before I invite Mr. Rothschild, or you can go ahead and come on up. And before we allow the public to speak, we're here from the consultants. I went through and did, I did some extensive digging. I spent a day on it. Be happy to know residents back there. So I want to go through a little bit of history. The, and explain a couple of things that I was able to explain to Ms. Cosgrove before we started. The site plan for the rec center area, I hadn't looked at it because once I signed the plat, I don't, my whole house would be filled up with paperwork. So I typically put this into recycling and then rely on the files. And I hadn't gone back and looked at them. But the site plan for the rec center included a sports court of 5,400 square feet. That also depicts a 10-foot-high chain-length fence with three associated light fixtures. It's not labeled what the surface would be. I think that we evaluate it as impervious, because that's, we would take a worst-case scenario. But I believe that what happened is we were trying to give the applicant some flexibility to turn it into that sports court and whoever you wanted it to be. In my notes from way back when, I have that there was a discussion of basketball, tennis, some other things, so. But I think what we were trying to do is allow the applicant, who's part of the HOA, probably the majority owner still, to work with the current residents to see what you guys wanted when they finally got around to doing this. The second point I want to make is the clubhouse and the pool, under state law, under building code, pools must have an enclosure around them for safety. But also under state law, the back of a building or side of a building can function as part of the enclosure. In this case, what was proposed by the applicant and approved is that the back wall of the clubhouse is part of the enclosure. So it's never been possible for our building inspector to actually CO the clubhouse separately because it's not safe. Unless the pool is finished or it has the rest of the enclosure around it, he can't give a CO just to the building. I hope that makes sense. Because, just as an example, let's say you're having a holiday party. It's Labor Day and everyone's having a cookout and you're drinking. And somebody wanders out and falls out backwards and knocks their head in the pool because there's no fence around it. The HOA is liable. You don't want that to happen and you certainly don't want anybody dying inside your pool. So because they're really integrally related, he can't, like I said, separate it. I did a site visit on Friday. And by the way, I want to say that it was exciting for me in a way to go there. I've been there every year somehow or other. And for the first time, I saw a real community. You guys, I want to congratulate you. Every house has its own little gardens area. Whoever the realtor is, I believe, Mr. Stein told me, it's the last house on the right before you go down. It's got four little adirondack ch... You, you've done a nice job. It looks great over there. Seriously, it was exciting to see. The landscaping is matured enough now that it feels like you have a lot of privacy in through there. So I know why you're frustrated that you don't have that next element going for you. But it's nice to see that you guys have created something that honestly feels like a community and not just a bunch of houses thrown together. I saw neighbors walking, talking. It was like seeing an old-fashioned neighborhood from the 50s and 60s and stuff. The other aspect about the rec center area and the site plan is there, I believe there are three trees that are supposed to be planted. That's what I think I counted. They're to the eastern edge of that little bit of the site plan. Normally, when we give COs, or in TAD authorizes COs, our zoning administrator, Ms. Moss, it's that the entire site plan's been completed. So that's part of the reason why there's been no COing as well is that they weren't proposed to be done in phases. We have discussed with the applicants before that they could phase, et cetera. Fifth point, there are lights in the parking areas that are required to be installed per the site plan sets. I saw some lights in my visits, but the poles and fixtures I saw did not seem to match those on the plans. That's a TAD call that should be noted, just Mr. Rothschild's writing it down. The plans do say they were equivalent by the fixture description, so that would be her call to see if it's really equivalent. Sixth point, tonight, what we're prepared to do is to like, to extend the site plan on the rec center for three months only. This is for two reasons. One, at the last meeting, Mr. Rothschild, the attorney, said on the record that he thought they'd be done with the pool and clubhouse and the parking by Labor Day. I did see that there's a lot of progress in the parking. There were workers putting up the decorative stones around it. And it looks as though, well, continuing on to the next point. With the rec center on one site plan, and the sports court and the landscaping, the parking and the club and the pool house all together, the way we would normally work this out is that they would all have to be completed before you CO anything, because it's one big CO. However, in speaking to Mr. Stein, it's clear that the planning board wanted to grant some flexibility to you guys on this recreational area, I'm going to call it, the sports court. Because we didn't even label what the surface has to be. And that's normally something we, we're pretty detail-oriented here, we would normally have that. But because of wanting to grant the flexibility, I personally discussed with Mr. Stein the idea of maybe just taking the area that's there, it's kind of lumpy with piles of rubble, I'll call it, with weeds coming out of it. But if that could be leveled, scarifides, not to be so fancy, planted as lawn so that someone could do volleyball, croquet, badminton, any kind of recreational use that that might qualify as the sports court, that's really Mrs. Moss's call, not ours, because this is actually already through us. But if that could work out, then you could, if this is all done within three months, that we could get a CO on everything. Again, some details have to be worked out, but that's the best sort of compromise I could work out with Mr. Stein over the telephone during the day. Then if Ms. Moss determines that the sports court does need to be constructed, fenced and lit, then one thing that you could do is separate that. Because as long as the rest is done, the fences around the pool, et cetera, then I believe that you could show that as a future phase. Mr. Stein was very strong about saying that some people in the HOA have said, we don't want that. Others have said, yeah, we do want this, but we don't want that. Meaning, I think he said, some people don't want to hear the sound of the basketball court. Others are like, yeah, but we'd like to have some amenities, maybe for our grandkids or children when they come in. So I know that's, things that don't require building permits, like swing sets. If we could approve this and let it go as a grassed-in recreational area for the sports court, then you wouldn't need to pull a building permit, so you wouldn't need to amend the site plan later on. So these are just things for you guys to think about, for what you want when you have your HOA meeting. Because if it requires a building permit, then you might need to have a site plan amendment. But if it doesn't, just structures that are portable, like swing sets, then it might be easier for you. So the last thing to point out in my reading was that we also had put additional conditions that were required to be completed prior to any issuance of the CO. The first was that for the planning board attorney to approve an form and substance and easement and maintenance agreement for the parking area that's in the town right-of-way. For you guys who live there, this would be the parking stalls that face in toward the parking area. That's actually in the town right-of-way. And as it turns out, it happened already. It was reviewed and accepted, Mr. Rothschild put those in. The second was for the applicants to submit an overall site plan set for our town records that would depict a trail easement. There's a trail easement that runs through there that ultimately should connect almost all the way down to the walkway if we can get the pieces done, the trails commissioned. That was not done, but Ms. Pollard, I'm going to turn it over to you. There was something submitted so that we could act, I think, at the time. And it's up to the Board to consider whether that's adequate.
So the applicant did finally record the easement with Winnicke Land Trust. And as part of that recordation process, there's a document which outlines, you know, the purpose of the easement. And attached to that document is a map. And the map is a dash line, but it does show the approximate location of the trail easement. So the applicant is requesting that that map serve as the site plan amendment, so to speak, so that you just keep that map on file instead of having to bring in another copy of the site plan and to put the dotted line on that. The town did request a master map so that they don't have to keep going to all these different documents to figure out the site. So as a compromise, what we've proposed doing as part of this resolution, there's two resolutions up for consideration tonight. One is to extend the time to complete construction of the rec center. The other is to extend time to complete construction of the whole project. And, you know, the project is about forty percent, thirty percent complete. So we're giving, we proposed a two-year extension on that matter. So what's been drafted is a resolution which would grant them the two-year extension. But note that before any future extensions are granted, they have to provide that master site plan showing the trail easement.
Yeah, that's good. It's always been a problem, since the beginning.
This file, messy.
What's the purpose of that, on the site plan?
Can you pull in a little bit, just so we can hear?
God, I'm so loud, though, Michael. All righty, seriously. What is the purpose of showing the trail easement on the site plan?
Well, just, I mean...
All easements are required to be shown.
Under our zoning law, all easements are required to be shown on the...
But if, at this point, it's already in, right? It's, I believe the trail's already in, right? I don't even, so it's sort of nonsensical.
No, the purpose is record-keeping. We have a zoning law that says you have to show the easement.
But I mean, you have a record, you have a better record. You have, it's recorded with the Dutchess County Clerk's Office. The world is on notice.
Well, it's up to the Board. Well, it's up to-
Not only that, if you go to the site, you see, you see the easement, which-
Here's what, no, here's what I will tell you, so, no, I don't want to add any burden onto town employees. The rec director is the one who is also in charge of the trail system, and what she typically does to find where the trails are, are supposed to be, is goes into our office and looks in the file. I'd rather not make her always go down to the Dutchess County Clerk's office.
No, she doesn't need to, though, Michael.
There's a copy, there's a copy of it, I was just also saying, it's also part of our code. It's not going to, not a requirement, it's not a condition of approval tonight.
But it can be, it can, first of all, this trail easement is a gift. This was a gift. You know, my client didn't even have to do this. You know, they're, they're trying to be a good neighbor.
Not disagreeing with you, we appreciate it.
So, I mean, and, and they've done it, they've done the work. This, to me, is nonsense.
You're saying they can't get a plan done within two years and show us the trail?
But, well, it's, that's not the point, Victoria. My client doesn't have an endless, you know, pocket. You know, if, if they can save money because it serves no practical purpose, then let them save some money.
So, the town, part of the problem with this file-
They're trying to be a good neighbor.
Part of the problem with this file is that everyone's been cutting corners for years with these documents, and it's really hard to have a good record of what's been happening. So, since this board, this iteration of the board has come to be, they've been trying very hard to make sure that things are properly documented. And part of that documentation process is having a master plan, the site plan, showing the location of things like easements and septics. I mean, we had an issue specifically where part of your rec center was built through the trail easement. So, it's partly, that was our issue, because we didn't have a document that showed both on the same paper. So, it's up to the planning board whether they want to require that or not, it's something that we can-
We're always sensitive, Mr. Rothschild, to ensuring that applicants don't have to spend too much money. As you heard earlier, we're not even making them give full plan sets to the rest of the board, but it's one plan set and you have two years to get it done. Again, it's easier for personnel and for future, you heard us, for the planners, it's easier for people in the future to be able to take a look at one document rather than referring to extra. I buy your argument, but it's, we can, I'll hear from the rest of the board as well during the evening.
I would just, you know, again, I, I don't understand what, what would you want to look at it for? You, you can go to the site, and there it is, it's done, I mean-
And it can over, and it can overgrow, sir.
I'm sorry?
It can overgrow, and it can lapse in maintenance, and all kinds of things, and I'm very happy that it's there.
Right.
But, you, you can't point to a, a path and say, "It's there." I'm happy, but if it's not on the paper, I'm-
Not only, I, I understand-
I, I would just ask that maybe you let it rest.
But, well-
I would just ask that you let it rest.
But I, I can let it rest, but it's, it's not right, it's just-
If you want to keep calling our code nonsensical, you're welcome to. If this is going to advance your applicant, advance your client's interests, go right ahead. It is in the code, and I'm going to tell you right now it's in the code. And the time you're taking to argue this is probably going to cost more than the plan set was.
No, it's not.
You're not doing anything-
You also didn't request a waiver of that.
I'm sorry?
You didn't formally request a waiver of that.
Well, I am, I am requesting a waiver, I think, I think Victoria said I was requesting, she spoke for me. Did you not?
The language didn't appear this way to us, let's put it that way.
I think she did, I think she requested it.
I did, I did-
Use the term-
Say his, his request that you accept.
So, I, you know, we want to be formal, that's fine, I request a waiver of that requirement.
In writing, please.
We'll let the board, we'll let the board consider it.
Can I ask a question? So, there's future development proposed. In the process of doing that future development, are they going to have to submit new plans? Or are they based, are they based on existing plans? I'm sorry?
As-built drawings are required after the buildings are constructed.
Okay, so, so, once everything is built, a set of as-built plans, a final set of as-built plans will be submitted, is that correct?
Currently, they're doing it building by building.
But, but in the end, when we reach that end, is there a final set? No?
Building by building.
So, if they're doing it building by building, we'll have set A that has one building, set B will have two, set C, so, I mean, at some point, the, what was approved, let's say, you know, hypothetically, is 10 buildings. So, you'll have set whatever, 10, that has 10 buildings, correct? You'll get to that final, final plan. You'll have all the others along the way.
The trail passes behind many of the lots on homeowners' association property.
Okay.
So, there's no development on it, so there's not going to be a map that shows that trail.
So, the, when they get to building 10, again, this is hypothetical, it will only show building 10? It won't show the whole thing?
The whole site, right?
Okay.
And, I, if I'm remembering correctly, from the map that I saw that was just submitted recently, because I hadn't seen a map before, it goes in front of a couple of buildings that are already constructed and have COs that don't show that easement.
Okay.
The sewer, the sewer treatment plant?
No, the building's up on top.
Oh, okay.
Right, right.
So, the, the walking area along the road, there's nothing that designates that trail right now.
I haven't seen the trail location forever, so that's why I forgot. I do know that-
It doesn't fall-
There's nothing, there's nothing in the plans they've proposed, but the part that he's filed with the county does show it.
Shows a dotted line, yes.
Yeah, this is also, isn't it meets and bounds?
They're, they don't do meets and bounds. Winnekee doesn't use meets and bounds.
I have, I have a question, right, there was, the easement was not a meets and bounds easement, it was a dashed line at a very large scale.
Because you do understand, Winnekee doesn't do meets and bounds descriptions.
I, I do, I do.
Right, okay.
So, I guess for TAD, would it be an option where this is something where an onion skin would be an option?
Yeah, that's fine to me. Do you know what we're talking about? It's just a-
It's an overlay.
An overlay. We do that a lot to the official set of plans.
Is that okay, TAD, or is that?
And Mr. Rothschild, I'll add that because the trail easement wasn't shown originally, one of the early contractors, before you guys were involved, it had been plotted out, if not recorded, it had plotted out, didn't have a copy of it on the site plan, and so used it to store junk, et cetera, and when he was doing contracting. That's the reason why we, we like to show as many things as we can, so that for the future, in case one of your contractors is actually looking at a site plan, they don't always do that, I know, but if they're looking at it, then they would know what areas to avoid as well.
Understood. But, yeah, obviously, at this point, the trail's in.
Yeah, at least as far as I know, I haven't seen it myself, like I said.
And in fact, they're, I understand from John Stein that they're putting in markers this week or next week. So, when you talk about, you know, whether it's going to be kept mode and, and all that, the markers will actually delineate where this trail goes.
Have you seen the Winnekee markers?
No.
Come by my house, I'll be happy to show you. They're sprayed on the asphalt and they disappear.
I, the way he made it sound was they're going to be sticking something in the ground now?
Some, they have some monuments, and then when it goes, I think this goes into a public road, this goes onto the roadway, I believe, they do a little decal that's sprayed on that disappears pretty quickly, so, because the Hyde Park Trails, I'm on as well, and people sometimes wander up my property because they think it can't go on a road, and there's nothing to show it anymore because the signs fade, so, I hope it doesn't happen to you guys, but just wave and smile if it does.
So, an overlay showing the, the Winnekee Trail?
Yeah, it's, center line of the easement, that's all. As long as that's acceptable with Ms. Moss, and I think it's acceptable with the board, and it is, we got a nod, okay. Anything else you'd like to add, Mr. Roth, you'd like to, the floor is yours, Mr. Rothschild, what else would you like to add?
So, if I underst-
I don't know.
So, the, the plan here is that, you still can't hear me?
I have one question, I want to interrupt, I'm sorry. The overlay, because it's a separate piece of paper, is that something that's written on the site plan to let people know that there isn't a separate piece of paper?
It's attached to the site plan.
Just in case it gets dis-
It'll be removed.
Disattached, and then we lose it? I mean, I don't know if it's a big deal?
It, it, it will be, as I envision it, it will be an overlay, probably on the subdivision plat, which is one big piece of paper that shows the roads and the house location, it'll be on a piece of vellum, it'll show key corners, so that you can put the overlay in the right place, and it will be a dotted line that follows on top of the road in some places and goes between buildings, and it will go in the file with the site plan.
Is the overlay signed by the chair or initialled?
No, it's a separate easement that's been filed, I'll put it with the map and the, and the description.
Which is that my concern was papers sometimes get separated.
They do.
And so, that if there was a note on the site plan stating that this paper-
The subdivision.
Was about-
Well, as Mr. Rothschild pointed out, we actually have copies already of the easement that are part of this, so, there, there's still some reference to it, and I don't know if you can make-
I'll explain what the issue is. They don't, they don't want to amend the subdivision or site plan, and putting a note on would be the same as adding a trail.
Okay, got it.
So, you want that within two years, is what you're telling me, the overlay?
We did, we did.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you?
No.
Oh, okay. Anything else, Mr. Roths-
So, I, I want to make sure I understand, on the, on getting the CO for the amenities, the idea is my client will complete all three parts to the amenities within three months, that's what you're, that's what we're doing. So, we're not going to consider allowing my client just to finish the two major items, grant the CO.
Did you hear my speech before? I believe your attorney can probably follow it better than I wrote it and read it. It's all on one site plan. You have not, we've suggested many times that you amend the site plan to separate out something, and I apologize, I'm falling my, I'm falling on the sword right now here, because I had looked at the plans, I kept saying, "Just bifurcate the clubhouse and the pool," I didn't realize you couldn't, because they're integrally involved. But it's been suggested many times in the past that you could amend the site plan, I know that's, there's some expense associated with that, but that way you could get a CO for the pool and clubhouse, assuming everything's finished on there, again, fence, et cetera, because it's a safety issue right now. You, you've probably been there, you're aware of that.
I've not been, yeah, it's been quite a while since I-
And the other option that I kind of threw out there, and again, I can't speak for Ms. Moss, I just consulted with her and spoke to Mr. Stein, the idea that since we didn't have, and we do show structures, there's a 10-foot-high chain-length fence, there's three light poles, and there's some kind of surface, and the total is 5,400 square feet, it's not a small little sports court. Because it's shown on the site plan, and we only, for TAD and Don Westermeyer, only CO what's, to make sure that everything's shown that's on a site plan, we have to address that somehow. And my solution, or compromise solution, was that it be made so that it's suitable for some kind of recreation, because the sports court's clearly intended for some kind of recreation. And this would be up to the board as well, but mostly Ms. Moss, if it's, again, a grassy area where you could do volleyball, badminton, croquet, cricket if you're British, whatever.
So, can we ask Ms. Moss if that's acceptable?
Can you put something in writing as to what you're going to do?
Well, I think what Michael has suggested, I assume, is what Michael, is what John told you, he's going to-
No, I suggested it to him.
Okay.
I need a commitment from the applicant as to what's going to happen and what the use will be, is intended to be.
But if, if he's going to put in, as Michael suggested, a grassed-in recs-
Recreational area.
I need to know whether or not that includes the fence that's shown, whether or not it includes the lighting that's shown.
Does it need a fence?
You tell me.
No, you, no, I can't tell.
So, here's, here's what's going on, so, your options are, you can amend the site plan, get rid of the sport court, or phase it out, so you don't have to build it right now, and then everything else can open. Or, you can say that what you've built is, is the sport court, and TAD can look at it and decide if it meets that requirement or not.
Right, but that's silly, if, if-
So, so, she's not going to, she's not going to make a decision tonight without knowing what you're proposing.
So, let me give you some more-
So, we can have, we can have a discussion.
We can give you some more guidance. There, we, we changed-
And then what about-
We changed the law many years ago, because it used to be that if there were variations in what was constructed to what was approved, if it was even three inches off, the planning board had to do a site plan amendment. We changed the law with a very compliant town board to make sure that now TAD has the ability to declare something de minimis. I'm trying to give you as much rope as I can here, so start taking it. If she declares it de minimis, that the fence is not there, then it's de minimis, it's not even, it's removed from our purview. I can't tell you that she's going to say that.
But if the area is not leveled, so it could be used for something that you would suggest, then, you know, if there's no, it's not leveled, it's not grass, I'm looking for-
She's looking for you to make the argument that it's a sport court.
Or amend the site plan.
I've led the horse to the water.
With just grass, right, we're just talking about-
Just talking grass.
Grass, man.
Level area, approximate size, grass.
And then what about the, what about the light poles?
One more time, just grass.
No, 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 we're, we're talking about, you had talked about light poles.
Yes, there are light poles that surround the sports court.
Right, is that the only area?
That's the only area.
They're also in the parking lot.
And you said that's going to be-
And, and, I'm sorry, and the parking that-
And you said it's going to be TAD's call.
Because it, those are approved elements of the site plan.
Right.
You proposed these, let me make sure you understand this again, you proposed this, we didn't tell you what to do.
Michael, that's fine, I, listen, I didn't propose these personally.
Someone did, on your side. I'm not condescending, I'm trying to remind you, you're the one who said to do this.
I'm trying to find out what's necessary, so I can get everything built, and I can advise my client what needs to be done.
What would be ideally necessary, would be ideal, would be if you, what, what was approved, that would be ideally, if it was approved. You proposed it, we approved it. If you're not willing to do it now, I'm trying to offer you a way out.
And I'm, and I'm trying to understand, I've got TAD here now, the light poles are in, and if she is writing-
TAD's not going to make a decision at tonight's meeting, because it's, she doesn't-
I haven't memorized what light poles are on the site plan.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine. If, if she doesn't know, she doesn't know, gosh.
But she, you make yourself available, so you can consult with her after, after tonight's meeting, but, you know, it's, it's hard to make a decision on the spot to some of these questions.
That's fine.
He's getting paid for that.
Yes, he is, yes. Anything else you'd like to add?
No, what am I?
No, I just, I-
I would like to-
I don't think you're serving your applicant well, you, it's like you haven't read our zoning and you don't understand zoning basics.
I, I understand everything, but we're at the end.
No, we're not, we're near the end.
The same, the same rules apply the beginning, the middle, and the end. We don't change things at the end.
Jeez.
And I will add, part of the three months is because you stated at the last meeting that it would all be done by Labor Day. In addition, after three months, construction season's probably pretty much done. You're welcome to come back and seek an extension if you still haven't finished them.
Three months brings you to the end of the year, December.
I'm sorry?
I said, "Three months will bring the extension to the end of the year," so at that point-
Usually, construction stops around mid-November, depending on the weather.
I understand.
Just offering you the reasons why, when you're sort of looking like you're only gonna give us three months, you've, this is already the second extension.
You know, I'll talk to you personally, but I, you know, when, when we had a conversation, it was, and I know you fell on your sword tonight, so when I asked the question, it became all of a sudden a condescending type of tone to me, Michael.
Excuse me, it was meant to be combative, not condescending.
Oh, it was, and you, you accomplished.
You accomplished that, yourself served first, by calling something nonsensical?
I, I called, I called this type of requirement at this point, where I've gone out of my way to, to work out an easement back in 2015, to get it recorded, so that you have something better than actually a, you know, something showing on a site plan which is meaningless. You know, it doesn't, a site plan, showing a line on a site plan does not render something an easement.
Well, can I, I can just say, Ted can bring a site plan to the Justice Court and say, "Our site plan's not being enforced." Unless the town had a third-party right of enforcement to this private easement with Winnicki, and I'm not sure that we did, it's much harder to enforce someone else's easement, because you granted that easement to Winnicki, not to the town. So, showing it on our site plan does give the, does give the town the ability to enforce the approved site plan. So, it, you know, there's a purpose for it.
Okay, okay.
I might add, I think of you personally as a nice guy, and I like you when I see, and we see, talk to each other in the gym. This noted, it may be something that you feel compelled to do for your client, but the idea that you are acting as though we are unduly burdensome on you is ridiculous. This board has bent over backwards, I've done the limbo underneath three-inch pole to help you guys. I didn't have to spend all the time I did yesterday talking to Mr. Stein, et cetera.
All right, okay.
Believe me, part of this is to help both the applicant with you guys, as well as the residents. This noted, if we're, if you're done, any comments from our consultants, Ms. Moss, Mr. Sotero, Ms. Palladaro? Anything else? Comments from the board?
I'd like to hear from the people, that's what I'd like.
Mr. Roths, what do you want, hold on, we had a sign-up sheet. Let me start. Ms. Cosgrove, you're first.
Well, first of all, I didn't, I, I wasn't aware of the easement for the trail. But, however, there are markers in the asphalt, if that's what you're talking about.
Good.
And, doesn't the trail go through the yacht club? And isn't the yacht club very much involved?
Just, just the road.
Just the road?
Yeah, no, yeah, we didn't want the trail.
Okay, and, well, that being said, I, in my very unprofessional, unknowledgeable opinion, there is absolutely, looking at the site, the original plan that was submitted, to me, there is absolutely no room for a tennis court, a volleyball court, a basketball, a putting green. So, if, and I don't see where Mr. Stein is going to listen to the resident. I don't know if you're going to be able to get the HOA together, in my opinion, now this is just my opinion, to have the responsibility of planning what was promised and what we cannot do now. So, I don't know, if a grassy area will complete the project, if that's what the board is proposing, perhaps-
The board does not propose.
Okay, all right, if that's what Mr., I mean, I don't know, I don't have any-
I suggested it so we could propose it back to us.
I don't think I have the responsibility to-
So, I just want to point out, there's two levels going on. When, when you purchased your, your unit-
Yes.
You were given an offering statement, and so the developer has to abide by whatever's in his offering statement. But, that might not necessarily be the same as what he's proposed to the planning board as part of the site plan. And any differences there at this point are not, the planning board can't enforce the offering statement.
Okay.
So, that's between, that would be between you and the HOA. If he's required to build a tennis court or something, and he's not doing it, that's a matter for you and the developer. All the planning board is saying is that the, the plan for the rec center includes the rec center, the pool, and something called a sports court, which is very vague and didn't include a type of surface.
So, at that, this point, that's a nebulous area, that, that's to be, so-
So, if they make an argument that the sports court should, can be a grassy volleyball space, then-
Right.
Then, if, if that satisfies the town, then at least that, the town is out of it.
Okay, all right, well, I, I guess I, you know, I can't bear any responsibility for even making, making an opinion of what I would want then. I, and I don't know whether Mr. Stein is, would be amenable to asking the residents. So, I, to me, the burden relies, lays on him then.
If he's, he has, if the project sponsor has the majority of the HOA ownership-
Right.
Then, it would be up to him to come to some sort of agreement, or just say, "This is what we're gonna do." If he can do that, I don't know what the, how your voting is or anything else.
All right. The only thing, I'm sort of an advocate for children who can't speak for themselves, and I'm not speaking for my granddaughter, because she was only a baby when she moved there, and now she's a teenager. But, I did take some pictures of something, a stationary thing, because it's my concern that the people, Mr. Stein told me that the demographics was for senior citizens like me. Well, senior citizens mean grandparents. And I also feel that the people who say they don't care about any facilities for children will be the first ones to complain when children are underfoot. So, I did take, I did take some pictures, should I give them to Mr. Rothschild, or?
He's free to take them. If there are things that you'd like to see somewhere in this recreational area, then it would be to him, not to us. So, they don't require a building permit, then we don't need to show them on a site plan.
Okay.
So, I was saying, like swing sets or bouncey something or other, teeter-totters. I'm probably dating myself, aren't I? Yeah.
What about the monkey bars?
And the other thing was, is the, the extension, is the meeting tonight about extending the building of the, another town?
Both, right, both.
Okay.
So, we were prepared to take, so, the way this works is, the applicants are free to ask for extensions. Under our code, any site plan, which this requires site plan too, because it's multifamily, you have a year in which to reach, to start substantial construction and two years to complete. In these kinds of developments, you're not gonna finish, unless you have a roaring housing market, it's not gonna finish in two years. So, the board routinely grants the extensions, and that's what we're prepared to do tonight for the rest of the site. For the, the smaller area, that, that portion, that's just the clubhouse, swimming pool, and rec center, we're looking to limit that extension just for three months.
And what about for the, for the next set of buildings?
That would be given two years.
Two, oh, would be given-
Yeah, and at which time, if they haven't finished all the rest of them, they're still welcome to come back and apply for another extension.
Will that be reviewed again, and another-
It's always reviewed, and it's always subject to a public hearing every two years.
Okay.
Ms. Cosgrove, I have a question.
Yes.
Does the homeowners' association have meetings or a group? No, I mean, that's what I mean.
Once a year, usually in September.
Okay, is it, I mean, is the subject of the Recreation Hall usually come up, or?
Yes, many issues have come up, and Mr. Stein blames the town. He says that it's the town that has held him up for the past five years. And it's all your fault why we don't have-
Okay, I mean, were there any, was there any consensus of, from the homeowners' association of, you know, did they ever, you know, have anything, consensus that they wanted certain things? Because I feel like we should represent the homeowners', at least me.
Okay.
All right, and I, I want, obviously, him to be successful, but you, you've been gone so many years-
Yes.
And so long that, and I've been from the beginning.
Mm-hmm.
I, and I just was wondering, there's no consensus document or thing with, where the homeowners got together and said, you know, "We'd like to see this first, second, third," or-
We never got that far, we never got that far. But, and no, it was never brought up what, what we would like, and all we could go by what was the original plan.
Yeah, the original offer, yeah, right.
The original plan of what was supposed to be.
Right.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Mercury, thank you, Ms. Cosgrove.
Thank you, Michael.
The next person to speak is Nancy and Joseph Monteleone. Oh, don't worry, you don't have to sign up. I'll, I'm gonna open up to the audience first, it's just if you signed up, I do them first, that's all. Of course, don't worry.
Joe Monteleone?
Nancy Monteleone. We appreciate anything you can do at this point. My husband and I are brand-new to River Ridge, April.
Oh.
So, we're newbies.
We're newbies, we're here more for support.
Sorry to see this back and forth, but welcome to High Park.
Thank you, it's, we're very happy, we're a little disillusioned, though, with the lack of progress at the clubhouse. And, and we really can't speak to it, because we're only here two months, but when we meet all these lovely people, new friends, everyone has commented over, "Don't count on the clubhouse, on a hot day, we can't go swimming."
Well, there's no water in the pool.
Exactly, exactly.
So, I think everyone, speaking for everyone, if we could get a firm completion date, I mean, you've been extending, giving them extensions since 2010. So, is there a way for us to get a, a firm completion date? And then, I understand, my realtor told me when we bought, that, that them starting new buildings was contingent on the Recreation Center being done, and what I'm hearing now today, that's, that was completely false.
They're completely separate. They're completely separate, but, so, I guess the alternative to granting a three-month extension and just saying, "You have to get it done by September 30th," is that if they don't get it done by September 30th, then the plan expires, and then the building permit is revoked. And so, the planning board's not an enforcement agency, we can't go force them to, to build. And, you know, letting it expire puts you in a worse position.
Right.
I think if we could hear from Mr. Stein something, even in writing, saying, "Okay, not holding until the 30th, September 30th, but, you know, tell us that, you know, by October 30th, it's gonna be completed, and then completed."
Unfortunately, we don't have, I mean, I know Jonathan, but we don't have the authority to do that. So, that's, that's what's difficult here. And, again, I, I can't emphasize this enough, no matter what you may have heard from any party. I promise you, we, I devote considerable amounts of time to this, studies everybody else around me. I treat this almost like a full-time job, and I don't get paid a penny, neither does anybody else up here. This is my 12th year, almost everybody up here's been here a long time too. Chan's only member has been here since this was approved, it was before Ann and I joined, and we're the second-longest members. That noted, we want to help, we've been trying to work with the applicant, just to make sure that this can go forward. Nobody wants to see a dead, dying subdivision down there. No one wants to see a failed project, it's not good for our community, it's not good for anything. So, that's why we've been doing the extensions. In this case, again, Mr. Rothschild said he thought it could be done quickly. Mr. Stein's more or less mentioned that to me as well, so we're kind of putting a firmer date on it. But, I don't think you want us to say that it has to be done by this date or not, because if it's not, then the building permit's revoked, nothing can happen until the process is started over again, and that takes a while.
Yeah.
So, if, it's, this is, I think, the best thing that we can think of to do, to try to help get moved, moving along.
Well, we are happy to see there has been a lot more movement down there, a lot more activity, so it looks like something is happening.
We also, we worked with Mr. Stein, the next set of build, I think it's the next building, they wanted to change some of the exterior, it's not radically changed, but there's some different elements now that are incorporated into it architecturally, and I think the new building will be the first one that you'll see that's different like that, so, and I, I believe I've heard from Mr. Stein that with the realtor who lives on premises, or lives on the site, that they're more confident that more units can be sold. And Mr. Rothschild pointed out that there've been a few more sold now. It's just it's going at a glacial pace, and that doesn't make sense for business, I know.
Right.
So, and certainly, if you had the clubhouse and everything operational, it probably would help sales and momentum. So, again, this is the best we think we can do for the evening.
Thank you, thank you so much for your time.
And again, welcome to High Park, sure.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak about this? Just come on up, state your name for the record. Please state your name for the record in the microphone.
Ms. Spivak.
Thank you.
I live at River Ridge. I have had the good fortune to be able to sell the last five units that's developer-owned, they're all closed. Thank you. I also sold other units in the auction, I also sold private units for people that needed to get them sold at better prices than, than the auction prices, but that was a, a risk, and that's what happened. I have people on a long list that want to buy into the complex, I have two people that already are ready to put money down on the new complex, the new part. I understand Jonathan Stein's problems with everything that went down, because there was no money coming in to our complex, no matter who, and I'm not trying to beat myself on the chest. It's, I think my living there helped, and I think that, you know, him listening to me about price points helped. And, in the long and the short of it is, for anybody who wants to believe it, the clubhouse will be finished. The pool will be finished within the next three months. Whatever the sports court ends up being, and personally, I would be fine with grass. So, you know, some people want more, you know, I know, but that's my position. I never really wanted a sports court that couldn't be a complete tennis court, because it didn't have enough full space. If it could have been a full tennis court, fine, but it can't be. There's lots of games that can be played on grass, and a lot of them are very popular now. I also could see the idea of having some, you know, few children's things up. I just feel as though, I've been at this place for 10 years, I love living there, I love my unit, I love all the people that I'm meeting, you know, that are coming in, and I just would like to pray, put my hands together and pray, that everybody could just take a deep breath, calm down, and watch it unfold, because it's now finally unfolding for you, and, you know, I, I just want to say that.
So, just let me, first, thank you for your comments, second, that's what we'd be allowing it to do, is by giving the three-month extension, allow it to unfold. And third, I need to explain that for members of the HOA, the residents, what I'm saying is, is that if it can be worked out, the applicant proposes, again, this is for CO purposes, that this, whatever is proposed can become the sports court, as long as Ms. Moss agrees with it, that's okay. The addition of any other elements to it, I, I can't say this enough, if it doesn't require a building permit, then it's still okay, it doesn't get approved by us. But, if it requires a building permit, then it must be shown on a site plan. I believe I'm saying that correctly, Ms. Moss, do you want to, in other words, if it's, teeter-totter is an old term, obviously. But, if there's something that doesn't have to have, what, concrete base, something? Yes?
The, the 10-foot fence, if the 10-foot fence is going to go up, it needs to be on the site plan. Fences generally are only allowed to be six feet. So, you know, if, at some point, they want to go back and put on a 10-foot fence, I think that would have to-
Well, it has to come back.
Have to come back. It doesn't require a building permit, but I think it would need to come back.
You mean, if they don't put it up now?
If they don't put it up now.
May I just ask, why was a 10-foot, 10-foot fence even suggested? That would be along the side that-
Probably for the tennis court.
All four, all four sides are 10 feet.
It's enclosed.
For a tennis court?
I don't know what it would be for.
Again, we were trying to be flexible with the applicant, it's not, the surface isn't even labeled, and I promise you, that never happens.
Right, okay, I mean, I, I think that it would be great, Jeff, if there was a way to tell Jonathan that maybe we should have a conversation as a group about possibility of it not being a 10-foot fence and a, and a whole hoopla. You know, that would be my position about it. I would rather, I hate the idea of a 10-foot fence down there, it's sort of a area that I think, right now, could be potentially very pretty.
I think so too, that's why I mentioned what I mentioned to Mr. Stein, et cetera. And I'll add, I, I would guess that a 10-foot fence, I can't recall now, because it's been too long and my head's too fuzzy.
Yeah.
But, it seems like it would be to retain some sort of ball activity, and I have written down basketball, so that might have been part of it.
I don't know, okay. Well, cement and fences really are not my thing, I'm more of a nature girl. And personally, I think that our whole, I think that people in general are going more for nature than they are for fences and, and asphalt. And that would be a wonderful thing, as far as I'm concerned, and I thank you all.
Thanks, Ms. for your comments, Ms. Spivak. Anybody else want to speak? Just state your name, oh. Just come up and state your name for the record.
My name is Amy Tully, T-U-L-L-Y. Thanks for allowing us to participate, and I want to just ask a quick question, just for clarification. When we were talking about the option of either separating out the sports court and having a different, forgetting the term you used.
So, so you could either, right now, it's one, one plan, sports court, pool, and the clubhouse. So, it could either be phased, so that clubhouse and pool can be completed and CO'd and operational with whatever that sports area is, being a future phase, or, as it is now, it has to be all constructed.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. My guess, my question is, in general, how long does it take, hypothetically, if he were, if our developer were to separate it out, how long might that take?
We told him it would take two, two meetings.
Two meetings, which would take about how many months? I'm just curious.
Uh, two.
Well, normally, that would be a month. The reason why is because the, the HOA parcel goes all the way up to Route 9.
Okay.
It's state law that if there is a site plan that's on a state highway or a county highway, we have to refer to, that's just county planning for their comments. And they have three days in which to review it and get back to us. However, we have a, I, I think, very good relationship with county planning, and because this would be something that I don't think arises to the level of county-wide interest, we could request what's called expedited review, and I think Ms. Laverne Way, who reviews for us, would give it back to us within two weeks. So, we, we just, that's all we'd have to do.
Okay, the reason I ask, that's helpful for me to hear. The reason I ask is my husband and I moved in in 2009, we bought our unit pretty early on, and I'm of two minds about this. On the one hand, I would love to just say, "Yes, let's have bocce on astroturf," or, you know, just have a, a little volleyball area, or something that would be fast and easy, and I love grass rather than concrete too. But, I don't feel like I'm in a position to say, "For the sake of the developer and just keeping it on one plan, we should proceed really quickly and, and pretend that's okay with all the homeowners." We have very little communication as a community, and I really feel it would be unfair just for the sake of, you know, hurrying up, when quite frankly, a lot of things that should have been done much more quickly than they are, we're still waiting on. If we're talking about just a matter of a few weeks, then this might allow us time to, as a community, decide or give some feedback to the developer about what everyone really wants- some feedback to the developer about what everyone really wants there. You know, because so many decisions, i- if the original plan isn't being followed and there was not really, really any specificity about that original plan to begin with, why not poll the homeowners now and at least get some consensus on what might be really...
Well, there was specificity. That would be, that, I mean, it's shown as some sort of impervious surface, surrounded by a fence with three big light, could be asphalt, you know, something impervious is what I'm saying. We just didn't tie the hands to say exactly what it would all be. That noted. The other thing to tell you is, I'm not trying to get you to hurry. I'm just trying to offer a pathway so that you could get the CO and maybe dip your toe in the pool the last two weeks of September.
No, I don't think you're trying to hurry us at all. I'm just thinking, I'm of two minds, that I could see how, how it would be better for the developer and for us for sales to do it quickly.
The other thing is...
The developer would have to request the phasing. The board can't do it, respond day, up here on their own. And they are aware of this possibility, and so far, it's not been a path that they have gone down.
Yeah.
The other option, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, would be that if they just chose to do the grassy area and then got the CO, if later on, they said, well, we want to put up something that, their structures, including a fence, including the lights, et cetera, they'd just come back and amend the site plan to show what's on there.
I see. That clarifies it. That, those are my questions.
It would be the same process, by the way. One is just to amend so that it can be phasing, because, and again, I can see from residents' viewpoints, I can see from the applicant's viewpoints and his consultants, that it's frustrating to say, why can't you just let us phase it anyway without going through that process? But that sets a precedent, that then everybody gets to phase however they want to, willy-nilly, and you can't do that in a town. It just doesn't work that way, because then what you think is going to be built, doesn't get built, and it can become a sheltered skeleter. So, it's, we were, if you're phasing, it must be shown in the site plan itself. And I can promise you, there's an attorney sitting in the audience right now who has, they've phased something so far that we're in sub-phase 1A out of like 400 phases, so. And in addition, the earlier site that you saw, the enclave, because that site plan as well, because it's multifamily like yours, they've actually, that's, their very first phase is the clubhouse, because it's built, and then they have their second, they've phased each location, so that, again, they don't have to come back to show so they can get COs each time it's already been phased.
Right. No, and to be clear, I wasn't in thinking in any way you all really were, had an agenda. It was more just to clarify my understanding, since you have the expertise and I don't, about what the differences are between the two plans you mentioned. I wasn't really sure what the timeframe difference was, et cetera.
It's weeks.
Okay, and it doesn't sound like it's a very long period of time.
And I want to, I, I want to defend Mr. Stein, because he's a nice guy too, and diversified realty that he's with. They inherited a mess of a plan. I, I, yeah, okay, you understand that.
I was there. It was a disaster.
And he really did help, they've helped clean this up in ways that I don't even know how to tell you, and all, really without much recompense. And that, this was never phased in the first place. As I said, somehow, this recreational area wasn't even part of the approved plan set when it was discussed and should have been, so.
Yeah, no, we've all come out in, in support for the progress that's been made. Many times, my neighbors here and I have come out. There are some details we, we were frustrated about that have nothing to do with what we're discussing tonight, and I won't bring that up, because I think communication could be much better and follow-up could be much better. But the truth is, the community is a much better place than it used to be. I, I agree with Susan. I think things are going to move forward. I, it's not so much about that. I just wanted to get an idea of what those two options really meant. And I personally had no problem with grass and bocce. I like the thing in front of Cosmos, and it looks like that's about the amount of room we have anyway there. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak? Councilman Svensson?
Hi, Emily Svensson. You all know me, the council member for Ward 1, which the site is within. And I just wanted to thank the board. I, I think, I've been on the town board for six years, and I think the whole time I've been hearing from residents that they're just really would love to see these amenities installed. And it's great that they finally are. And I, but I, I have heard concern about giving too long of an extension, that then they really just don't know when it'll ever be finished. So I think that the board's solution to offer a three-month extension, which is more than the applicant said they needed, is a perfect solution, in my mind. And I just wanted to clarify that, so the three-month extension will run through the end of the year, right? And so the applicant has the choice within that period of time to either finish all the elements or to apply for a site plan amendment. They're not choosing tonight to do one or the other. You're just offering that period of time in which they can do either of those things, right? And I know that, that TAD will be available to review any revised changes, and so it's, it's clearly the, all, all elements of the town are doing whatever they can to, to help this move forward. So I appreciate that, and thank you.
Thank you for coming out. Would anyone else like to speak? I feel like I'm, I hear, I see some rest of movements over there, because we're prepared to, come on up. You've been here before. I recognize you now.
I've been here before, and you have been kind enough to speak to me on the phone in the evening and other things. So I, I found it very troubling this evening, because I've been coming to meetings since 2011, and honestly, I've been in a lot of government meetings. No one has worked harder than you have to try to help us out, and so it was kind of unfortunate that it got off the track. I just want to be sure that I understand the options. I think I hear you say that we could finish the lawn and get the COQ.
I, I'm saying that if that's proposed, that I think the town would look favorably on it, as long as there's a recreational area.
Because if we were looking to have time to converse by separating the permit, we wouldn't get the COQ for at least a month, because the permit would have to be granted to separate them first.
Well, so it's not a permit, so what it is is...
No, I, separate the...
Yeah, in other words, we would separate out the sports court area, and, but you would still, the, you would still, I mean, if the proposal is made, say at the next meeting to...
Separate.
Separate it, or do an amendment so that it's separated in terms of a different phase, then we would hold a public, we could even...
Could waive the hearing.
TAD could recommend we waive the public hearing. We could circulate it quickly to DC Planning, ask for a two-week expedited review, and at the second meeting in September, as long as we get a response from DC Planning in that time period, we could then vote on it. So, that could happen at the same time as the construction workers were trying to finish the pool, et cetera. And the clubhouse looks like it's already done to me. I peeked in, it looks like it's already furnished.
It is, almost unfinished.
The paperwork still needs to be submitted to the building inspector. He is not ready to sign.
In other words, the, the CO would, the building inspector, we don't give to COs. The building inspector and Ms. Moss's only administrator confer to say, they take the site plan and say, was this built, et cetera?
No, I understand. Mr. Westerman?
Yeah. And I think when I was there, I don't think the decking is around the pool.
Almost, aside, the side by the building is not completed.
Right. That's what I was going to say, because I, I didn't have the plans, I think, but I'd just been looking at them. And I, by the way, I did discover I did have a set of plans, because this has been ongoing. I thought I didn't have any.
And ongoing, and ongoing, and ongoing.
But at any rate, all of those elements that are around the pool would have to be, and the clubhouse would have to be constructed and inspected and signed off by both the administrators, or the inspector and the administrator. And that would be up to the applicant's contractor and the applicant to make sure it's all done. But in other words, you could separate that out while that's still ongoing.
But, but probably the most expedient is to cede the lawn for now, in terms of time, while the construction...
The most expedient is to make sure that all of it's done at the same time. In other words, the decking, the fence, the final fence. I mean, I didn't look out everywhere, but it looked to me that the, the pool bottom is still rough coat. It doesn't, it looks like it needs this final coat of markite or gunite, to me. It wasn't smooth. And just so you know, I have a big pool myself, and you have to cure that with water at the end. Water has to go into it. And that's part of the final process for that kind of pool. So, in other words, all those elements have to be done. To me, it's the most expedient way, if you want to get the COs, is to, again, propose that that, that there's a, that the recreation area that you're going to propose, whether it's grass or something, is the sports court in effect, and let Ms. Moss declare the, the lack of fence, lack of lighting, whatever else, de minimis, so that the CO could proceed, assuming everything else is done.
But if, but if, I think I hear you say, we could be doing all the things together, but if we separate the pieces and the, and take the sport court out, that it's possible that that process of going through the approvals, the two meetings, has to be finished before the certificate of occupancy for the other two can be granted.
Right, because it would still part of the same site plan.
Just wanted to be sure I understood, and I'm...
Thank you.
Really evolving great. I, I just can't thank you enough for your time, and I, I wasn't sure that was going to come through tonight, so I wanted to be sure we said it.
I forgot to ask your name, and I forgot it.
I'm Sally Kirall.
That's, I thought so when you said, we talked on the phone, we have. Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak about this? I appreciate you all coming out. I hope we've been helpful to you.
Thank you.
I, I, thank you. I see your nods. Whew, okay, good. Mr. Rothschild, you want to come back up and make some comments or?
Yeah, Michael, I just want to make, here, that what I said last time is that my, my client has told me that he can finish the swimming pool and the, and the clubhouse by Labor Day. And I was very clear about that, and not the sport court.
I don't think you, it doesn't sound like you knew what the sport court was any more than I do. But I went back through and looked at the plans, that's why. So that's why I tried to work through this solution.
I understand, but I just want to make sure it's understood. That's all I represented.
Yes, I, I will take that for the record.
Okay.
And I, in talking to Mr. Stein, when I mentioned the three-month, he also reiterated that it could be done quickly. And when I sort of talked about the grassy area, now I'm sounding like a Kennedy conspirator, the grassy knoll, but when we talked about some sort of area where you could have recreation, he said that, he thought that could be done pretty quickly. And to me, it looks like it just needs a leveller and some seed and some mulch, straw, whatever else you want to put on it, and watch it come up. But again, that's for you guys to propose to Ms. Moss. I was trying to, like I said, move this forward. And I know that there's going to be disagreement amongst the HOA. Again, that's something that we don't control, et cetera. So, at any rate, I, it was nice to hear from the owner, the owners, and it sounds like we're making positive momentum. Anything else you want to add?
Nothing.
Oh. Anybody else? Any comments from the board before we close public hearing? May I get a motion to close both?
Wait, TAD.
A reminder that there's an as-built survey that's required before the CO.
Okay.
Okay, I suppose we close the public hearing.
Mr. Murphy has made a motion to close, and Mr. Big, all in favor?
Aye.
Who has these resolutions?
I do, and I think we need to amend the one for the, for the site pla, for the River Ridge, for the two-year one. It talks about one copy of the site plan for the project, which includes the location of the trail easement. We talked instead about a...
A copy of an over, a vellum overlay?
Mm-hmm. One copy of a vellum overlay.
Of the subdivision map, of the subdivision plat.
Of the subdivision plat?
Mm-hmm, for the project, which includes the location of the trail easement for the town records.
Yeah, subdivision. And then that was a, he had two years to do that?
Yeah, that's...
Right, that's the two-year one.
I think they have to be satisfied before they ask for the next extension.
Right.
Did you get that, TAD?
I did not. Vellum overlay, right.
Which includes the location of the...
Yep, got that. And I think the other one is good as written. All right. Any order that I should do it?
Nope.
Does it matter?
Well, let's see. I think Cynthia labeled them, it doesn't matter, okay, so...
Is it an O or a zero?
I think it's an O.
Okay, thank you. Resolution to extend site plan approval for River Ridge at Hyde Park, formerly known as Maple Ridge, August 16, 2017, resolution number 57-02O-TH. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby grants the applicant a two-year extension of the time to complete construction of the project as shown on the site plan approved by resolution number 57-02K-2 and including September 25, 2019, subject to the following condition, conditions. One, payment of all fees and escrow. Be it, therefore, be it further resolved that before another extension of time to complete construction of the site plan may be granted, the applicant shall provide the town with one copy of a vellum overlay of a, of a subdivision plot, which includes the location of the trail easement for the town's records. Do I have a second? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries.
All right. Town of Hyde Park Planning Board, resolution to extend site plan approval, River Ridge at Hyde Park Recreation Center, formerly known as Maple Ridge, August 16, 2017, resolution number 57-02O-RECK. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby grants the applicant a three-month extension of the time to complete construction of the project as shown on the site plan approved by resolution number 57-02J-2 and including December 30, 2017, subject to the following conditions, payment of all fees and escrow. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. Good luck, ladies and gentlemen. Good luck, Mr. Rothschild. Please wish Mr. Stein good luck. Do you want to copy these resolutions for any reason? Oh, wait, I have the official ones that I've signed.
Cynthia will, she can email them.
Yeah, she'll email them to you tomorrow. Thank you. Have a nice night.
Thank you.
Thank you all. I want to make sure you understand, we're with you in every possible way. We're neighbors, too. Okay, thank you. We're going to take a five-minute break before we come down. We're going to come down on the dais. I need a...
Can you sign that?
Oh, yes, wait, before we do. Where's my agenda?
Sign that.
Has everyone had a chance to read the letter I'm sending, we want, I'd like to send to the town board regarding local, thank you, any comments? May I get an authorization to send the letter?
So moved.
All in favor?
Second?
Thank you. And has everyone had a chance to read the minutes of May 3 and May 17?
Yes.
Yep.
May I get a motion to approve them?
So moved.
Second.
Oh.
All right, I'll move that.
Are they removed? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, now we can take our five-minute break.
Where is the bottom?
Take a five-minute break.
Great.
So just so everybody knows, I just want to tell everybody before we start, first, we used to do this come down here, because I think it encourages different kinds of speech, but back when we did, we weren't recorded or televised, because cameras can't really see here, which is why we stopped, so you can always see above. And second, just so you know, Ms. Kane is stepping down after this will be her last meeting. Ms. Weiser, our alternate over there, who's been to every meeting, has actually watched the last four years of every planning board meeting, all five years, I take that back, will be stepping in. Ms. Kane is not leaving for good. She's going to be the new planning board alternate, because she was the alternate beforehand, but she started another business, and it's taking off too quickly with her real business.
Yay.
It's good fact. I love, I love the planning board, and I'm sorry that I won't get to move forward with you guys. But I figured, you know, we're early in the process, so this would be a good transition time for Ann to, to step in. I've been working in various roles in the town for a long time.
Yeah, CBA, town board.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, I'll, I'm, I'll be watching you all on TV.
I guess so, the analog.
Right.
Oh, yeah, yeah, she, so she was, the alternates here start on an application and finish it till the, if someone recuses themselves. So it's not just temporary, so that we, you know who you're dealing with the whole time. So, and I just wanted to let you know, you'll be meeting Ms. Weiser shortly. So, do you, I see you brought a presentation. Do you want to get started instead of me?
Sure, and I have a laser pointer here if anyone needs to point to anything throughout the presentation, just hit the red button.
And make sure you use the microphone. Go ahead, pull that up.
Yeah, just before we start, I have a laser pointer here that anyone could use to point to the screen for discussion.
All right, well, why don't you go ahead and get right into the architecture?
I know, it's late. Sorry, we got to, I'm your thinking caps again.
Right.
All right, well, so, we, we were here early, early in August, I guess it was, it was. But we appreciated all the comments. So we went back and took the main comments that were brought to our attention, and we incorporated them to a point in, in the hotel. So, the, so the front area, we added a lot more of the Roosevelt stone on the front side. The, the main, the main emphasis was the back towards the, no, I shouldn't say the back, the, the western, to Route 9, is where we really tried to do a lot more work on that. So we, as you'll see, we, we turned the stone, so when you're, this is the view that's looking directly south.
Bill, why don't you use the pointer, yeah?
This is a view that's looking directly south. And so the corner, where, we down here where the light is, on the southwest corner, yes. And so what we do, we turned the, the Roosevelt stone around and add its, you know, make sure we have some of these elements that we were talking about prior to this. Go ahead, please. That's the other side. That's the north side, as you wouldn't see too, this, this elevation too much at all. Go ahead. So the, this is the, this is where all of the work was done, in the south side, to emphasize some of the, the things that are brought up to us. I think some of the examples that, Diane, you were showing us, the idea of having different schemes and how you can blend things together, we kind of taken what I, what I call is more of a tripartite architectural look, where you have this, this one layer here, a middle layer, and then, then the, the top layer, almost like the, the rendering that you gave us of that one building, I think it was up in Albany. think it was up in Albany, this one here, this rendering that you gave us?
That was Moscow.
Oh. Wait a minute. Albany. Did you get this from Donald himself? So the idea, what you see here is what they call the tripartite scheme, and so taking that and kind of emphasizing a little bit more, in looking at the idea of doing that here, putting the Roosevelt stone on it, and trying to bring some of these elements up, then the idea of the sitting porch area was incorporated on the backs, well, I'd say the Route 9 side, and this is the view side, and this is, this is where you're up high enough that you will be able to see over the CIA into the valley. Not quite sure if you'll see the river or not, but you'll see the mountains on the backside, and it's going to be a wonderful spot. And then we made this little emphasis right here, you'll see on the rendering, where it could be a drop-off area, but what this allows is these, these first floor rooms, these suites down here, will have their own private balcony. But what it also affords is this area right in here is a mechanical room behind this area, so the public can come out there and use the same area too. So we're very excited about the suggestion and embraced it, and we really like how it all kind of turned out. We're going to the next slide and start seeing some elevations and kind of where this is starting to look now three dimensionally, and so we're trying to incorporate some of the red, the red line concepts here along with the red brick, and then the stone area, and trying to bring some of these elements through. So this is, this, you wouldn't really see this elevation from a distance, this is more when you pull up. So when you pull up, you start seeing a lot of this detail really coming at you close up as you, as you pull up to the hotel. Another view from, this is more like looking south, excuse me, northwest, if you're looking from, you'd be in the southeast corner of the property, looking towards the northeast, northwest rather, in this direction, you know, CIA is on the backside. And then this area is an indoor pool area on this side over here, meeting rooms on this side. Go ahead, please. And then this, this gives you that, that view from Route 9, and emphasizing some of the more stone, turning that stones we talked about, adding some elements here, having this whole area that we can use as a porch area, and then looking up in this major element right here, you see some of the ins and outs that we tried to not just have a flat facade, we're trying to bring things, you can almost see it right here a little bit too, it's not shadowed like what it is. But this area right here is going to be, we probably do a real nice reception area, hospitality room, that'll be a story and a half with a whole vaulted ceiling in it, and then rooms on either side of it, so they could, and then we're also probably going to add a balcony right here, and so to really take advantage of renting this out, put a nice balcony up high to see the emphasis, because the views up there are going to be spectacular. That drone shots that we had in the last presentation, I mean, we're above the tree line, tree line's about right in here, so all these rooms up here are going to see some fantastic views on this whole thing. So this is, as you come across Dorsey going into the north on Route 9, this is kind of the view that you'll see of the hotel. It's up about 20 feet from Route 9, so it's not real high, so it's, this is a, this is kind of a pretty good representation of what this will, this will end up being when you see it as you come in. Go ahead, please. And then this is from looking to the north, from the north looking south, past the hotel a little bit, you can see how some of that whole piece is working through the, one of the, some of the detail and some of the balconies that we're talking about adding up on top here on that whole thing. Go ahead, please.
Also in your, in your package, when we made the cemental, the challenge that we came away with at the last meeting was what to do with the package treatment plant. So what you see there is we took the fence off with the plans to lock all the manholes, which are at grade. We're going to pitch that to DEC, see if they'll buy it. And the two units that come above grade, we were going to enclose them in a pole barn. So a pole barn doesn't have a slab on it, just, you know, four poles that go in the ground, and then you erect the structure around it, and the idea was to, to make it look like a farm outbuilding.
Which is why now it has a concrete pad for the tractor.
Well, we can get into...
Now, I love that you proposed it there as a site plan.
Yeah, yeah, you saw that.
Of course I saw it.
So we'll show that to you.
Keep moving around, I guess, to different locations at different times. A celebrity drop-in.
I like it.
All right, Chris, but this is kind of, again, the type of structure that could go there.
And just to mention, it doesn't necessarily have to be...
It wouldn't necessarily have to be exactly that design, it could be something more suitable to, and compatible with the hotel, yeah.
I figured that Mr. Hoy, since he's paying great attention to the architecture, might have something to say about this down the line.
I think the major point was that we didn't want to have the, those elements just sticking out.
Yes, exactly.
And so to come up with some kind of an element...
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
It was great.
I think about me as being, or anybody of us over here being the user, and like you said, if you're up in the top, you have some really nice views of the river, the gunks, et cetera, across the way, you don't want to look down and just see a stockade fence and what looks like manhole covers and...
Right.
So this is, I think, to be a better proposal. So the reason why I asked, or rather, why I wanted us to come down here was, I wanted to get everyone, where I sit, I get to hear from different members, and I keep hearing different things about the architecture. And I've been encouraging Mr. Hoy because I like the fact that every time I'm seeing something, I do think you're responding to our comments, but I just want to make sure we have clarity.
Sure.
So that, again, part of the purpose of this is that architecture in our town to us is very important. More than that, if you're going to follow the concept plan, the architecture was pretty, not consistent, not the same everywhere, but there was a consistency throughout it. So we were looking at this as though it sets the tone for everything in the future, which means it's unfortunate you're the first one out the gate, and we spend a little bit longer on you, but it means that it will go quickly for everything else if they're proposing something large like this. So that was the first topic, and I'll go around and ask people to speak. And the second was the trail system. I forgot to bring it last time, but I did pull out, this shows you where the trails were, and there's a trail, I believe it's called the rough walking trail, that's right around your area. Part of what I also wanted to discuss was, there's, right now, there's a pedestrian-only light over here at the intersection of Dorsey, this is at Dorsey and Route, I'm sorry, down here. Thought I had it upside down. Yeah, you can see the trail system is right in through where the hotel is.
Okay, yeah.
It goes right around here. This was what was approved in the concept plan. And it occurred to me that if you, if we were, again, we haven't thought about how to phase the trails, like phasing the sidewalks, but it occurred to me that if you're going to be putting in a, any section of a trail now, this, where it was approved, could actually get you, if you're coming out of the hotel, maybe to Dorsey. Dorsey also has a pedestrian-only phase because the students there, believe me, are coming home late at night like I did last night from my trustees meeting, there's a bus stop there at Community College, and there were still students leaving, I guess some students are coming back now to campus, so there's students walking across the way, and there's lights on both sides for them to follow. So you would then have a way for pedestrians, they want to access the CIA, they could either take this intersection or the new one that's proposed. So it's just an idea for you guys to think about. Again, when I looked in the plans, this is called a rough walking trail, and I think that must mean it's meant, you know, with dirty boots, et cetera, as opposed to, you know, ladies and their pumps. So, not that I'm sure they're in their pumps, they're going to be walking on that far away on the sidewalk anyway, but that was one portion of it that I wanted to discuss tonight and get everybody to sort of be on the same path. And then Tad brought up, and I hadn't really understood what she was saying earlier, but she's had concerns all along about how it fits into the broader sort of concept plan. And, you know, I think you said you found the map, it's the actual concept plan, I brought it with me tonight if you wanted to see it, but, so what you've done is you've taken the same block, the same sub-phase, but where there was supposed to be a road here that would then allow these next buildings to come about, instead this is now, the road is parking, in effect, and there's cars here, which is okay, but I just want to make sure that we understand, or that we at least discuss, that there is a way to go forward with the next set, because if you're not going to have a road, then you'll need to do an ODA down the line, all that. And maybe, I know I'm going way into the weeds here sometimes, but it's a way to get everything to go faster as we go further, instead of just looking at the project in isolation too. So those are my sort of five topics. Of course, I made copies for everybody too.
Oh, good.
Not for everybody, I rephrase that, but definitely not for everybody, sorry.
Three bodies.
No, past honorees of DCC award winners, so they got somehow confused in there. If you'd like to see the trails there, so, because Mr. Hoy...
Do you guys want to share? No, we can share. Are you sure?
Yeah, no.
Because...
I haven't just compared to the bike trail.
Well, there's, so there's, if you look in the legend, there's three different colors of trails and through here, or four.
Oh, yeah, I see all these up here.
There's sidewalk trails, walking trails, bike trails, and, sorry, it was rugged trails, that's what it was called, and I believe that the one that's up at the pros by the hotel was a rugged trail. So I just want to make sure we know, since these are going to be parceled off and owned by separate owners, how we would get this whole thing going. But since Mr. Hoy has flown in for this, I'd like to start with architecture, and...
I actually drove.
Yeah.
It's only four hours.
Oh, really?
Yeah, it's not too bad.
Okay.
Yeah.
I guess I...
Very nice, it was a very beautiful drive.
Good, no, no, I'm glad. I'm just, I'm aware that you're spending time on this and energy and you're not from here, so I'd like to start with the architecture.
Sure.
And who'd like to go first? Brett, you want to start?
Sure.
By the way, down here, I use first names, I'm not so formal.
Oh, yeah, I'm fine with first names, please.
Michael and I have had a few emails back and forth, as I mentioned before, but I'm a fan of country French, and it, it seems to have pretty much nailed it, except for the red brick, but I can't have everything, so, otherwise I really like it. I'm impressed.
The red brick is, is how it all started with the CIA building across the way.
That's what I've heard.
And our owner, Mr. Lance Shaner, is, just loves that red brick with that grapevine joint, you know how it pops out like that? He, that's his signature, he loves doing, so that's kind of where that came in, and we wanted to keep it as much as possible.
Yeah, I know.
What's a grapevine joint?
It's, show and tell. So, there's, there's the bricks stacked up on each other, right? And when they, when you normally tool a joint, it goes in like this typically if you put a tool. Well, with a grapevine, what it does, it comes out like that.
Pops out.
Pops out, down like this, so it's a tool that makes it, so you can see it. So they call it a grape, grapevine.
In other words, it's convex instead of concave.
Yeah, correct.
Is that, is that what they have at the CIA?
Um, no.
Okay, so you're just, you're actually...
But it's, it's something, it's a preference from Mr. Lance Shaner.
That could be a good thing.
We could convince him on our next building. Maybe a transit.
I have mentioned to the board that even though this has its own section of code, you know, we look to other sections for guidance, and there are replete references in our code that if you're adjacent to a parcel with an historic landmark, your architecture should be consonant to it, not replicating, but somehow matching it, having a dialogue. So that's why I think the red brick was there from the very beginning, is because Roth Hall is a nationally recognized landmark.
Correct.
So, at any rate, Brett, anything else you wanted to say, or?
No, I like it.
Thanks, Brett, appreciate it.
I really like it.
Diane?
I always have a lot to say.
Okay.
And I gather for me, one, first of all, thank you for all the changes, I really do appreciate it, and you can tell you took everything to heart. I do have some questions, but you answered the first one with regard to the brick, because the brick is giving me probably one of the biggest issues. So since the, if you're telling me the owner goes to bed with a brick... I think you're telling me. What? With a grapevine joint. Because ideally, I would like not to see that. And again, very much in the Roosevelt mindset of also what's architecturally in this town in the stone, which you have definitely incorporated, but more in a clapboard, something simpler is, is more of a symbol of Hyde Park. I like the idea that you included the front porch. And this may sound nerdy, you know, picky over here, but the style of the archway is a very Victorian approach, which does not seem to complement the rest of the style, like straight along, you know, the archway and the spindles.
We did a bracket, that's a more of a bracket design?
It's very Victorian-looking spindle. The design itself looks busy to me.
You want to simplify it?
Simplify, yeah, simple.
That's less money, we think we can do that.
Wait, whoa, 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 whoa.
It's my turn, it's my turn.
Are you, I'm just curious, are you saying, is this area, are you talking about this area right here to be...
I'm talking about... Which view? All the archways and the spindles. Okay. That, all that looks very Victorian, which is different than the, does that make sense?
It doesn't look Victorian to me, because the spindles are thick and they used what I'll call rickrack style. This looks more rustic to me, but that's just me, everybody has their own interpretation.
Everyone...
Trying to match up, what was, trying to match up what's been here the same way.
Which looks much more Adrona.
Yeah, right, there you go, right. And I think that's what we were trying to portray in here. Maybe it's all this top piece here that's making it very busy, maybe it just needs to be more simple.
Simple, yeah.
On the top.
Saves money, we can put money elsewhere places.
Where's...
On the columns...
He must be happy.
On the columns, what is that material?
The, the actual siding, siding area?
That siding?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Could it be a siding material?
Because again, that adds to what seems that, very busy, you have brick, you have siding, you have stone, and that's a lot of different elements.
Yeah, I believe when you, as, let's see, I've got a picture of, of the red line in.
Right.
See, that's all siding there, it acts as one mass.
One mass.
And I think what you're going to see is it's going to act as more of a mass area once it's painted out to maybe a better color.
That if you did, like, instead of having three different architectural textures there, like, again, just to simplify, to keep it quieter, like, again, that's just my one opinion. I like the fact that you extended the overhang, I love the fact that you added some terraces along the way. I am so appreciative of the porch itself, we're just talking technical.
So was our owner, once we developed that porch area, he just thought it was...
Does he have a rocking chair with his name on it?
Last big cigar, he says, this is a great, and then the whole porch area is in this, it's kind of a updated floor plan, and so you can see public can walk out this way, so from here on over, all this is publicly used.
He said, "Pentacles."
All publicly used, and then this will be private to the suites then, on this area.
Which is nice.
So everybody can use that on the whole area. It's, he thought it was a great idea, very good.
I'm sorry, just about how long, about how long is that public area?
Right in here?
Yeah.
Uh, probably about 60 to 70 feet.
Okay.
Plus or minus, yeah. It'd be close, yeah, because these are basically 15 feet width-wise and stuff in that area, so, maybe about 60, 70 feet.
Thank you.
So it'd be working out really well, yeah.
Diane, do you want to continue?
Yeah.
Keep going. No, it's, it's one at a time.
The, and, and I know one of the alternates had submitted to you, I think, a while ago, his rendition of a graduated. I understand size, I understand the number of rooms. But what was nice about that is it made it look like it was coming out of the hill. It softened the view, so that as you're approaching it, if you go as, and I know you've all been through this town, we know you've been to Dunkin' Donuts tonight. And thank you for that. That the buildings in this town are very basic, very simple lines. They are all low. This is going to be the first five-story building. And I was just trying to think of ways to incorporate the character of the town. And one way is to soften it by, you know, maybe not having three steps down, because that might alter your numbers too much. But even if you can kind of have the octotech look at that and see what elements he might be able to take from it. I, I know with my business, I dealt with my octotech for ten straight years, and they, they, they can cop an attitude at times, but they do also like challenges along the way.
So, just so we can be clear, this is the elevation she's referring to that was quickly sketched out by our alternate. And I believe that to achieve this, this, so there's a tiering down each time, but this has been regraded, right? To make this look like it's doing something, which is a lot of expense as well. I know he labeled how many rooms he thought could be in each one, and it doesn't come anywhere near to what you're proposing.
Which is why I said I understand that there are the numbers that you have to meet, so it may not be the same amount.
That's, that's probably the biggest challenge right there. We'd have to lose a number of rooms to, to do that, terracing down like that. In the economics, we try to maximize the room count as much as we possibly can here, because of the, this is not a very inexpensive building, as it is right now. So, we're trying to maximize room count. That, going in that direction, it would be great, but it, it's, it's trying to work with just room types, rooms themselves, and to maximize the, the standards that were being held to by Marriott on top of everything else. And, and then working with the board too, the, the, the planning board, to make it all work. Yeah, I think it was a fantastic design. Unfortunately, that, I just don't know how we could, because I did give that to, to the architect. That's how we came up with a couple of these other elements up in here, higher center roof. This, this whole, if you can see in the elevation.
Right.
We brought that whole roof up higher that way to try to get some of the different, not just a plain roof line, but try to center that, that, that whole area there to make, not obviously terrace down like, like he showed, but at least show that, that's a little bit of different massing, so you're seeing variety, not just one simple plane across the way.
Which was very important, yes, along the way. Are you planning on having events there also, weddings and? Because I couldn't remember, I heard you say that there was a special room?
There's meeting rooms.
Meeting rooms.
There's meeting rooms. There's, there's nothing that's a wedding event area at all.
You don't have a restaurant for, that posts?
No, 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 no restaurants at all. It's the, the only, it's, it's a brand standard to have breakfast and then a reception for the, the guests there at night. And it's that reception is usually spaghetti and meatballs or a pizza night and, but it's, that's, there's no, no restaurant whatsoever in this whole thing.
So, then the food is catered?
No, it's actually a kitchen in there. We have a kitchen.
Oh, you do?
We have a kitchen, but not a restaurant. If the kitchen is really geared up to have these receptions in the breakfast area, that's, that's a very small kitchen.
Yeah, what we're going to do is, sub-phase one B, would that be the next in the other?
Yes.
I know we got a long litany to go through. In the second phase, we're looking to introduce a restaurant and what we're going to call an event barn, if you will, that would, you know, have things like weddings and private events. And then we'll start to hopefully introduce things like, you know, a small brewery. Under the brand of, right now, we're thinking a label called The River Market. We're working with a, with a restaurant operator in Westchester County. It's in the early stages of that, but that would be adjacent to the hotel as, as the, as the second piece. And so that's sort of what some of the, you know, some of the, we're in the early days of that. And hopefully, in the next few months, we can start to introduce that as well. And that'll help sort of complete the picture on, you know, how food and events and things like that are all going to work.
It'll be exciting, yeah. And my last comment would be about parking. And I know I mentioned the last time, am I concerned about the amount of parking? And I understand it's for future use also, and that you were planning on obviously doing landscaping. For me, it is very critical that if you are going to be attracting people and if you're going to be having porches and amenities for people to sit outside, even if you have some landscaping around a parking lot, it is still, they're looking at a parking lot. And I am not a landscape designer, but that to me would be critical in how you think of the concept of the parking lot and how that gets designed, so that you get your needed parking. I'm not talking about doing away with any, but being creative in the design of it, so that year-round, there's something aesthetically to be looking at. Sometimes you need to kind of think a little out of the box.
Yeah, again, on the landscape architecture, one of the key themes of the project, you'll see things like farm fields and, you know, small, you know, pocket type, if you will. That would be, obviously, as we start to introduce the overall concept and the overall project, you know, that could be the, the initial landscape architecture as well. And Larry, why don't you?
Well, I mean, one of the things we did here is we separated the parking. You can see there's a planting island in between, so it's not a mass of parking. Also, on the east side of the hotel, there is quite a bit of buffer between the parking and the hotel. And on the west side of the hotel, there's no parking. It's all on the east side. We, we do have the landscape plan here. Chris, if you could find that?
It's not going to really show.
Yeah, yeah, it doesn't, but you can see the island there, you know, how we're, you know, it's not one dig see of parking. We made a real effort to, to break it up. And again, you can see that fairly good planting buffer between the parking and the hotel on the east side, right, right there. And then, of course, on the west side, there's no parking there. That's just an emergency, you know, drive there with some planting on it. So, we made a real attempt to soften it up.
On this real quickly, just for the future, I'm assuming that this would become the, oh, sorry, this would become a roadway, which is why this is shaped like this? Or this would become a roadway, or this become an intersection or something, so you might lose a couple of parking spots in advance? And in addition, even though we have extra, a little more parking than what's required, if we, as I said, when we discussed sort of how this works with the next phase, if this is sort of become, you know, a road, so to speak, and you had a building here, then this parking, as you stated, is sort of banked to share with others, so we need to bear that in mind always. I'm not a person for excess parking, but in this case, again, hoping that we'll see the next phase soon. Full disclosure, I think I told everybody, I went to, down to River Market with the applicants, along with Supervisor Rohr and Councilman Schneider, and it's pretty impressive. It's all locavoral color, rather than using the cliche farm-to-table. It's a huge restaurant. I don't remember how many seats it was. It's a lot. But it's, it's a full-service restaurant with little market, little wine store in it, et cetera. And the proprietor is very highly regarded in the restaurant world. He, or the owner proprietor, he used to manage Windows of the World, but opened up many high-end restaurants in the cities. He's got a great track record. His son's part of the business, as well as I recall, and studying sustainability. So, there's a, a theme that would be emerging here, but I just wanted to mention that real quickly. Anything else, Diane? Those were good comments.
That's it for now.
Ms. Dexter?
I just want to say thank you. I, I can see that you've been very responsive. It looks like it is a lot more cohesive. I think my comment last time was I couldn't quite tell. It was looking like it was having an identity crisis. I see a lot more character to it that I can identify with. You know, I'm not, I don't do a lot of architecture. I don't know the right terms. But I see elements in here that I recognize in this area. At the very top of the back, the west-facing, in the archway, you've got the, it's, there are little beams that pop out on the peak.
Oh, yeah.
Right? Yeah. And, and that's repeated throughout, and I don't know if that's Adirondack style or what, but.
Correct.
I see that in a lot of the other larger buildings from, say, the, what's that, Arts and Crafts era or whatever, right?
Arts and Crafts.
And.
We tried to, yeah.
And they definitely do look a lot more simpler and more, to me, I like simple. I, I see one of the things that you also worked on was, you had remarked about the palladium windows and how they were rounded at the top. And I see now that they are, especially on the eastern side, they're now, it goes like this instead of being rounded. But I do notice that there's still quite a few rounded windows on the first and second floors.
You mean.
On the northeast. Yeah, arched. Which to me kind of clashes with the, kind of, the, the direct, it's like, pick one.
No, that's a very good comment. Take a look at that at all.
Yeah, and you can't please everybody.
Yes.
And I, and I think that's, that's the whole thing with this, is you are trying to please many, many of us. I think you've gone a long way. I personally, I can't offer anything other than those windows as far as what else I would like to see. These views from the northeast are so helpful, because I can see now.
Right.
There is so much character in here. There's depth, there's, there's, there's a variety of, of materials, but not too many. And I, you know, it's just, I think it's really come such a long way. And, you know, I think Hyde Park would be proud to have something like this. And, and I do understand that you're trying to, and you have, you've grasped some of the, the red brick from across the road. You've grabbed some of Mohawk, you've, you've made it your own, you've taken these elements on the site, that, whatever, that little round.
Right from the, the.
The tower thing.
The tower.
And, and that's repeated, and I'm like, oh, that's so cool. So, I, my hat is off to you, because, you know, when I think of Residence Inn in Marriott, I don't think of something this beautiful. And I would hope that for Marriott, that they would, this would be like a flagship, that they would say, you know, this is, this is the place you need to come and see. And the fact that you can spend a week or two weeks here.
Correct.
Is perfect. This is exactly what we're looking for. We want people to come and stay and.
I, I think one of your comments that, the last meeting, you know, you, being at the intersection of Dorsey and Nine, you're looking up there and says, that's a cool place. I want to stay there. And I kept thinking about that, and, and this is going to be such a great place in the woods, so to speak, is the way I look at it, that it's going to be so interesting, looking in that, that intersection, but what is that? That is pretty neat, you know? So, I, I do think that, to your point.
And I'm trying to think, like, someone who doesn't really know Hyde Park. And so, if I'm staying here and I'm driving around, I'm seeing these elements and I'm feeling like I'm connected to a fairly wide, to the whole Hudson Valley area. Because Hyde Park is home to, you know, we're part of the Hudson Valley. So, I'm just really happy with the changes you've made and, you know, except for those windows with the rounded tops.
The eyebrow arch, you don't like that up there?
And, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Murphy?
I just can echo that I, so, I liked this so much more than the first rendition. I really got to tell you the truth. I wasn't really crazy about the first rendition. I don't get into architecture much, because I think it's part of a, you know, you're in the hotel business, all right? So, but this is, this is really nice. I like this.
This is what we brought in the first time.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's what I mean. I was, I was kind of nonplussed by it, but it's, this is a major difference between those two. You've come a long way and.
It enhances the building so much better too.
Yeah.
And it, it's, it's a good process. It really worked well for us too.
Thanks, Chan Torrey.
Okay, you guys are killing me, because architecture is my thing. I love it. And now it's like, oh, no, why did I, why did I resign? So, first I want to say vastly different. This is a huge improvement. I think one of the things that all of us are struggling with is the scale of it. That there is nothing in Hyde Park that's this big, except for the CIA, which has been here forever. So, you kind of, you grow up with it, and then to see something new, it's like, how is that going to work? It looks much less monolithic than it did before, and I appreciate that. I made some notes as people were, were talking. One question I have is the emergency drive that's on the west side. Is that going to be impervious material, or is that?
It's, it's the same material throughout the parking lot, the driveway.
So, it's going to be asphalt?
Absolutely.
Would you consider doing some kind of pervious material that could be planted but also driven on? So that you weren't sitting on your beautiful porch, looking at a paved driveway?
Yeah. Couple thoughts I had around that is by having what we're doing here now, it seems like this is going to be a great drop-off area. And so, I'm thinking that way right away. Secondly, I think what you're, maybe we, on this plan here, can look at it, is this is a major entry that we're looking at right here. And if people did not want to drive through our parking area, when this gets farther along, on the master plan area, they would just go down this way. And then vice versa.
Okay.
It might be more of this direction than anything else.
But you had it labeled as emergency access?
I think that's because right now, it's all it's intended to be, but as part of, when.
Okay.
As the old story was here during the concept plan, it was actually considered a, another entrance, another relief valve, so it's for all the traffic inside.
So, that's where we were thinking, it's, it would be same type of construction as everything else.
And the traffic impact study does evaluate that actually as a fully, a full road.
All right. I just wanted to, to clarify. All right. So, I, I agree with Diane about the porch, and it could be the way it's rendered in the drawing. Because the building is so large and the porch is relatively small, I think it's hard to see the details. And perhaps it's in white, just so it's more visible. I think partly, it's the white porch on the stone with the brick. I think if the porch materials were maybe more, or design rather than materials, or, or both, were more reflective of the arts and crafts details in the arches, that that would bring more consistency to the facade of the building. Let's see. I also, I appreciate that the brick, its intention, it, I mean, it's partly the signature of the owner and it's partly reflective of the culinary. But the, aside from it being brick, I don't see that this building is reflective of the culinary. I mean, the culinary has a very different architectural style. So, if that's really the intention, may, maybe it needs to go more strongly in that direction. Although I'm hearing discussion about the River Walk Market, and there's the pole barn, and there's the tractor. So, if that's the direction you're going, I think it needs to go more strongly that way. I just, I think you need to develop more brand consistency, otherwise, it's going to look a little bit all over the place. The center window, the big.
The big one, yes.
Palladium window. Is that arched at the top, or is that peaked at the top?
Peaked.
I'm sorry.
It peaked down one side, arched on the other.
Yeah, it's peaked on the west side and arched on the, on the east side. That's what I believe I saw.
Okay, maybe that's why I was confused.
If you look here, you can see the actual peak right there.
It also depends on which view. On the northwest view, it almost looks like it's peaked.
Yeah, true.
It's, it is peaked.
But see, this is a bigger elevation right here. You can see how it angles up, flattens and goes back.
Oh.
Or no, it's actually, it does peak. Mine has a peak.
I can see above the line.
Okay. I just think.
Matches, matches that.
Yeah, I wasn't sure, because the way the cross beam goes across, I wasn't sure if it was like it cut off the peak or if it was arched.
No, this, it would be like this.
Because all the other, or almost all the other windows had been changed, and so I thought that one should be reflective of the style of the rest of the windows. I think in terms of the parking lot that we were discussing on the east side of the building, I know there are other members of the board who know a lot more about landscape. But I think if you use large deciduous trees, that that would break up that view as you were looking out. I understand that it brings in, well, large, as opposed to pear trees or. I think it's more typical of the. I think it's more typical of the Roosevelt landscape to have large deciduous trees, obviously they're not going to appear instantly large, they have to grow that way. But it breaks up that view as you're looking out over the parking lot. Obviously, it introduces another element of maintenance, but I think it could go a long way to, to improving that visually. So, that's all.
Okay.
Your swan song was very eloquent as always. Thank you, Tori. So I'm just going to ask a couple of questions here. I, I too think you've come a long way. I guess, some of my questions will be easier for me to point. So what, what are the purposes of these, there's one at each end, just out of curiosity?
Do you want to?
I mean, do they have functions, or are they?
Let's go to the floor plan. Yeah, they, they do, actually. All right, so, this one here acts as an area for breakout area, it's, it's open air. So on the meeting room side here, could be a nice little pavilion that would be like an open porch area, so that's all there. On the other side, which is not shown, but it's, it's going to incorporate where the spa is, this, this area right in here.
Okay.
Trying to incorporate some of those areas there.
So if I'm right, this would be Route Nine over here.
Yes, that's correct.
So this looks as though it has brick and stone columns, but on the other side, it's not, it's made of different materials, it's just stone, or is it brick and stone, too, down here?
Right there. Mainly the, the stone. In fact, we could probably do it on both sides exactly the same.
That's one of those things that's making me kind of nutsy because.
Yeah, no, and I think that's a great comment, and I, I want to keep it consistent, too.
That's, it's, I'm accused, believe me, by friends of being too matchy-matchy, so, it's true, it's just who I am. So, the next, and this is, again, so to cover some of what I heard earlier, I under, I don't mind the brick, I think it kind of gives it a majesty and sweep. And because of the way the stone is shown, I'd like to see the materials at some point, if you could just bring us something smaller, because the computer always makes this look like it's bad fake veneer stone. And I think that would, well, no, it's just the way, the way this works, and so if I, we could see it, I think that would sort of help the planning board. I think that the porch, I look at the bottom and the way the bars, the, everything looks just like it does at the top and the balconies, to me. I, I get what Diane was saying, as well as Tori about the top of it, maybe you want to incorporate something that reflects more of what's up at the top, but it doesn't bother me personally, I think it has a nice rural look. And when I saw the porch, I got really excited because I, I did start seeing a rocking chair on each one, and somebody sitting outside and kind of looking and waiting, and I thought that's, it's a really nice addition. And even though it's smaller, it's really a wide portion of the hotel, and it gives it, to me, on this side, now there's a human scale element to it, it was lacking before.
It's about seventy, seventy percent.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's, it's a big amount, so like I said, it gives it, to me, it, it gives it that, that humanity, that human scale to it. The arched kind of eyebrow things, I hadn't even noticed that because that's not what I'm good at. When you said it's siding, would this be hardy board, I assume, hardy board? So, one of the things, and just go ahead and shoot me, but the way there's both vertical and horizontal, I know it gives it depth and distinction, but it also makes it look busy to me in through there. That's just me, and I'm, so I'm just throwing out everything, but I like where you're going, so.
Yeah, I think.
Act of that in. In other words, I, I get why you've done it horizontally here, because those are the bump outs as well, but when you have stone, brick, and then the hardy board going in two different directions, like I said, it looks busy to me. But then again, it may be when it's built that I go, oh, that's not true, so it's just something to kind of throw in there, I'm looking at the plan. Then last, one of the things that bugs me about this, and it's, this is where I, I excel, which is not in the architecture, but the colors, again, because the stone is showing one sort of shade, and then we have red brick, and then we have almost a yellowy cream, yellow and red is like, it's McDonald's. And this isn't really yellow, but I can't help it, there's got, yes, something to make this look more earth colors.
Yeah.
To it, because this.
You're right.
I think that would actually make me not even worry about the way that the, there's horizontal and vertical, I'm being serious, because if there was a complementary color to it, then I think it wouldn't make these stand out in a way that looks, I don't want to use the word garish, but that's what's coming up in my head. A natural wood, or, hardy board isn't natural, it's cement, you know, fiber.
Or just painted natural wood color.
And it comes colors, I'm just thinking.
Or green.
Yeah, sage green, any of those things that are kind of historical color combinations, I think. Yeah, not gray, depressing.
No, not gray. Gray will look too institutional.
Soft yellows, they're soft and muted.
Not with red brick. They're with, with dark stone.
True.
And without the stucco, that's all that color. I mean, I like that color, it's just that the red is what's making it.
So ambiance, it, they complement one another in softer colors, so.
With red brick.
That's why I said, every one that I look at, it keeps showing yellow to me.
The shade of the red brick.
Yes, right. And the undertone.
And the undertone, and then, first you have to decide on the brick, so bring in a brick. Just borrow wood from his bed.
But, again, I, I just. And I want to say that I did some playing around and drawing to see if there was a way to add more gables on the others, the east side, and there are, but then I started looking at it more closely and thought, you don't really need to emphasize those, because no one's going to be standing on that. What you've done on the west side is what's important, because that's the viewer side for the visitors and residents. What's over here is, you're going to be pulling up, you're not going to go, oh, gah. So that's just wasted money to me, so that's why I wanted to get through this portion of it. Pete, Tad, Victoria, do you guys have any comments on the architecture?
I don't see architecture items.
I have other questions.
No?
No, not only, not only the architecture.
So, can you give me an idea of how the barn, like, how much space is that going to cover when you're looking at it from Route Nine? I can't tell together, you know, how tall it is, or how big it is, and is it going to end up covering this building that everyone's working on?
I don't think they've settled on.
Where the pole barn is.
Talking about this one?
Yes.
So where, is this building here?
How does that, how does that work with the front elevation, and is it going to block it, and?
No.
No, it, it goes down, I think, six, seven feet below the first floor of the hotel. So Tom was asking the same question.
Yeah, it's a great, it's a great change.
Was that?
So someone's driving along Route Nine, I think it would help the board visually to have an idea of, if you're driving along Route Nine, what is the view you're going to see when you look?
So looking up, you'll see the pole barn, but looking from the building, you won't notice it as much.
Yeah, you go over it. The pole barn is very.
So put the pole barn in this, this view, is what you're saying?
Though that would certainly help, but.
Or the view from the road.
Just remember, this is the view we've been looking at, it's because you're, you're stopping here a lot, so from this angle, you don't even see the pole barn, oh, sorry.
But you will as you drive by.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's, it's very small.
And there's that concrete pad with the trailer, with the tractor, right there.
And then, so that's just one question, and then the other one is, a little concerned, just this in the concept plan is a through road.
Yep.
And so I just want to understand how this is, in the next phase, you know, is this blocking, use of this as a through road moving forward, or are you wedded to this being parking for the hotel, or is this just the first Phase 1A and Phase 1B will show this a little bit different, because this is kind of the spine of the whole interior development.
In the concept plan.
Yeah, well, well, the intent, let me, let me grab the point that there.
And also, just for legal purposes, if this is not going to be a quote-unquote road, then we're going to start talking about.
Open development area.
Open development areas.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, the, the intent, the, the through road was going to be here, up here. You know, so when, however this gets developed, now, you know, we have a pretty big grade change here.
Yeah.
So we have to manage that.
Yeah.
But we could cut it back more if we had to. But I think, you know, this thing here, I think in the plan was all going to come down, you know, get, get lower, because all this kind of worked together here.
Tad, since, since Victoria's taken there, do you want to talk about how this fits into the concept, because that was your big concern, too? I mean, by the way, this road led, this road didn't lead to a parking lot.
No.
This road led into the road, main road, that's why we were using this to say this would be the central spine. But are you saying that this would now go this way, and then that would become a public road, or?
Or possibly being realigned?
Well, again, a couple of things, this came down here originally.
Oh, yeah.
We moved it back here, this could easily come up to here, and then have a through road through. That's probably the easiest thing to do.
Well, you show this in your, in one of your, in one of your plans, in your BAF, it's not really labeled like figured.
They showed the road up above, like.
Sorry, I mean, just show it, show it to Michael, but you can see here, here's the, you know, the super, superimposing, and here's the, the other road that comes all the way through. So it's above, you know, as Larry said, it's shown above, above the parking lot, now you have some grade issues, you're going to have to look at that, but, right?
Yeah, Chris, go through the other one?
So this is a green space, and that's?
Yeah, yeah, so, so the idea is that road is above the parking.
Okay.
Okay, I just want to make sure it's not precluding anything that's part of the concept.
And all I was, and I brought it up because I just want this to be in your minds.
Yes.
As we go forward.
It's, the question that I have is, you know, this would be easy enough to, you know, to pull it up in here to align with that future through road.
Intended main road?
Yeah.
Well, you, oh, right, right.
What you're, what, I see, you, you would line this up with the road, and then people would take a left to go down into the parking area. Okay, that's up to you guys. I mean, it's, we're just trying to make sure that we, there's a bunch of pieces, or balls juggling in this, we're just trying to make sure that what we approve here now doesn't make it harder for the next step.
That's a good point.
So, because I know this is exciting to see this project finally get started, because it's been 12 years in gestation, and we finally have a real, I mean, just today someone said, is this really going to happen? And I went, yeah, yeah, I think so, they're, they're, these are serious dudes. So, and the other question, the next question I had, too, was the, it's on Facebook, and you sent me the press release or something that Aileen's quoted in, so is this going to be branded as a Marriott, or is it still going to be soft branded Marriott? So it is a Marriott?
It's a.
It's going to be soft branded Marriott, there's two others in the country, one of our partners has those, the two, ones in Amelia Island, one's in Bethany Beach, so it, it's, it's not going to be a standard cookie cutter Residence Inn, we're obviously doing a lot more.
Oh, yeah.
But it's also not going to be Residence Inn Marriott, it'll be in at Bellfield, at Cullinan, whatever the name is.
Marriott?
Yes.
Gotcha, okay.
We're trying to keep the boutique-ness.
Fine, so the other issue is, there's already been rumors, as I told you, wrote to you, I've already heard that people are saying, they're going around telling people that this is going to be welfare living because it's going to have kitchenette, I'm not joking, yeah, they spent 19 million on the edifice, this is going to become.
They're going to spend $300 a night, I think.
Yeah. So, just, could you explain how the, is a kitchenette inside these? How that, how that works?
Yeah, we, we have some room layouts, and we'll go to that sheet, we can talk about that. There you go. Thank you. So these are the different room types that are going to be available. We typically get three different room types, so it'll be a studio, a one-bedroom, and a two-bedroom on normal prototype pieces. What we have, let me see if I can find just a, a typical room layout, this, this is what we call a studio here, this was one room here. So you walk in, and then there's a kitchenette here with a full refrigerator, a tube burner, electric burner unit right next to the refrigerator right here, a full dishwasher and a sink. And then there's a counter here, and then a pull-out sofa area and a living area here, and then on a studio, it's, there's no wall here, it's just an open area with a, with a bed, and then a full dressing area and a bath area in here. So that's a typical room. Now, all the rooms will have this kitchenette in it, like, just like I just explained. And for some reason, these aren't depicting what we call a one-bedroom. So these are preliminary, as it is right now. But a lot of times, the prototype would actually have a wall right here, so it acts as a one-bedroom. And then a two-bedroom would be very similar to what you have, a main core area here, this area right here, it flips on this side right here, and you have a two-bedroom in that, in that perspective.
Will there be ever square footage for the standard you just mentioned?
It's roughly around 475 square feet.
That's pretty big.
It's almost bigger than, it's almost twice as big as a standard hotel.
Yes.
That's, that's the size of my first nursery apartment.
Yes.
So, when you said two-burner range, is there a microwave or any other?
Oh, yes, there is a microwave.
And it already comes with pots and pans and glasses, et cetera?
Correct, yeah, utensils will be all there, silverware, pots, pans, you get a coffee maker, you actually get soap for the dishwasher, popcorn is free, and then free coffee, and for the, for two, for two times, and the plates, usually it's setting for four, it's all set up for four people, is how, pots and pans.
Again, this isn't real of a design plan, I'm sorry to have to ask these dumb questions, but I want to end of the record.
Yeah.
What exactly is going on in there, so people don't, rumors, as I said, just spread.
Yeah, so just to follow up on Michael's question to help not just us, but people who are watching, clarify, who do you guys see as your target market? Is it long-term, like boot camp culinary students, people for conferences?
Correct.
Okay. Feel free to, feel free to elaborate.
There's all different kind of layers of people that are going to be staying here. And when we took the tour of the CIA, we realized that there's these week classes. What a great place to stay when you have a week, the weekend classes, that's, that's one. I think our biggest customer is going to be the folks that want to just see the area, the 4.5 million people that come up here for the tourist side of things. I mean, what a great operations of how to stay right here where you can go up to FDR, you can go take the trails down there, or if you're visiting from Vassar, Maris, even across the river at New Paltz, I mean, I think it would attract people. But I, I just think this is just going to be a base of operations for folks to stay at this one, one area and just use it.
Not the one here all the way there.
Let me just point out that Hyde Park sits in the center of all the historic estates, so if you stay here, you can take a day trip and go up to Alana, you can go down, down to sites in Westchester, you can stay to see the ones here, I'm marketing this for you. In addition, we have, so I was also, this, this is a good segue into the trail things, because I was on the board of Mills Mansion for nine years, and Roosevelt Vanderbilt Historical Association, before that for three. Historic tourism, which is what people come up and take a train and tour things, is actually declining, recreational tourism is increasing, and the reason I'm saying it's a good segue is Hyde Park offers both. We have miles of great cross-country skiing in Mills-Nory, we, you can get down to the river there, we have great bike trails, walking trails, et cetera. And so if you come up here, you can kind of do both, you know, if you have young children, you want to go mountain biking, you can. But that's why I brought up the trails issue still, too, because.
Agreed.
We don't have to decide anything tonight, I just want that, I want you guys to propose what you want, so we can figure out how to mesh this as we go further down the line. And, you know, it seems kind of weird to think about putting in just a section of trail, but that's the same thing as putting in a section of sidewalk, really, because otherwise we'd have to have some easement that someone could come in later on and do at the HOA or whatever. So if you guys can resolve that, but I also wanted to hear colleagues, did, I personally saw the rail trail where it goes from the walkway over west, did a biking event, and it went through Pine Plains, and Pine Plains, every business was busting with customers who'd stopped there to get water, food, shop a little, do anything, because they weren't on a real race, they were just riding, some big group, like maybe 400, 500 people. And I, I'm just thinking about, there's, down the line, we should figure out a way to connect to the walkway, Mike Oates is the chairman of the board, and it's not be, yeah, well, it's just, this would help, I think, the hotel business here.
Absolutely.
And the fact that if you can, if we can get the trail system, you know, always in mind, Hyde Park really does have first-class trail system in our own town. I am lucky enough to live by the Vanderbilt estate here and I can't tell you when I go down walking, I see the same people sometimes, just because it's so beautiful down there, taking the trails for exercise with their dogs, et cetera. So this, to me, has a nifty way of identifying into that. Chad, do you think that, were you satisfied with the fact that you're looking maybe to change the?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, as long as they consider the long-term impacts to the next phase.
And we do know that the grade goes up east of that, so there is, there would be grading issues. That's everything we were thinking about is, are you going to grade anything now or would you just let this go on? Because you don't, you own this parcel afterwards if you need to get around on their site somehow. So, again, just things to think about down the line, because I don't know where you're thinking about River Market to go.
Mike?
Yeah?
One of the other things that was in the concept plan, and I'm not suggesting that you put it in now, but to reduce the area of parking, they had layered parking in these two phases?
In other words, underground.
Structures.
I know how much, remember, I know how much it costs, Cristal.
We're still to be part of this hotel. We're not just taking six acres and lopping off in there. We're almost 50/50 venture with that.
Oh, good. And that's not what I mean in that way, it's just, I mean
We need cross-accesses.
Yeah, you may leave, who knows what happens in the future, so
Forever.
He has his tractor here.
Right.
So at any rate, to kind of, because it's getting late and I know we all have homes to go to, to kind of cycle back, one of the things I think would be helpful again would be to bring an idea of the materials, to reexamine the colors. Diane and Tori both kind of suggested maybe simplifying some areas, bringing in that arts and crafts detailing that you see up here more into the element. Again, I don't know how to do this because I'm not a building designer. And the, Diane says she prefers clapboard. I know that's not really an easy thing to do for a commercial hotel, so I think the hardy board is what you're looking at there. But again, taking a change, reassessment of the color there would help. And I agree with Tori, the scale
Can I enter a few seconds?
Yeah.
The reason I say clapboard, I was meaning hardy, some type of fiber.
Oh, okay.
In lieu of the brick.
Okay.
But we realize that the brick is not going anywhere, so.
That's a, that's a cheaper solution.
I'm quick.
And more inexpensive solution, I wouldn't say
No, 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 actually, it is, we don't really see brick buildings anymore because they're not as energy efficient. There's a lot of issues with them. I actually was excited to see it because we have a red brick building right next door that's on the historic register as well, and I'd love to see more of that brought in, but it's the expense and so
Yeah, it is.
Underpinning, by the way, everything, we say it all the time, underpinning every of our comments, we're so happy that you're investing in our community, I can't say that enough. I mean, seriously. And this represents an insane investment to me for what the kind of hotel product it is inside. I was trying to read my notes and through there, I agree, Tori made a very good comment that the mass and the monolithic scale really is different now. You've articulated it better, I think. And again, maybe showing a little more symmetry and a little simplification, I think, is what I overall heard. Not that we don't think this is a huge improvement, as Chan said, and I think Chris Oliver, our other missing board member, is at a wake tonight, his grandfather passed away, but I did get a chance to talk to him briefly and he seemed to like the way this is going as well. So I think you'd be hearing the same thing that you heard from Chan to him. Last thing is, you know, I'm a sidewalk guy and most of us are up here too. You proposed a sidewalk still only on one side of the road. And I'm wondering, is there a reason why it's not on both sides of the entry? And by the way, thank you for moving it out, adding some green space, people feel safer in walking, but is there a reason? And also, the crosswalk is shown, I believe, somewhere around here. And I'll be honest with you, people are going to cross here too. You're going to need to show more than one crosswalk, I think.
All right.
Because if you're going to, if you're walking, if you're walking up here, you're not going to go all the way up front. You now have this beautiful porch entrance on the side.
Yep, it makes sense. Yeah, yeah, so we'll add that. Over here, what we did, Chris, I got to get you to move your head there.
Before you're shot with a laser.
We pushed it back here, so five feet here, we pushed everything back. So in the future, if we needed that sidewalk, we could put it in. But what I didn't want to happen is, is people, you know, cross here, walk down here and then cross here again. I wanted to get them on this side.
So are we going to have a PED phase only on this side always and then not have one here? I'm just thinking about what you guys are
No, 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 no. It, it could go here in, in the future if, if we need it. I pushed everything back to allow the sidewalk to go in if, in fact, we needed it.
Just to have one side.
Okay, then that's just for the planning board to remember in the future.
I'd like
Because need, as I said, DOT, if you have multiple buildings all over a site, they pretty much tell you straight out, have sidewalks on both sides of your road. That noted, we're not going to have any structures in here with the exception of that. And so maybe in this case, you don't need to have the sidewalk here.
Probably a lot of people
And you did add a sidewalk along here, I saw, I believe I saw.
Right, sidewalk along there.
That's why I said, I just think you need another crosswalk somewhere here.
Okay, no, I agree, because we have sidewalk wrapping around this whole thing. We have a crossing there, we could get one here, then the sidewalk comes down here, then crosses, and then comes down here, and then crosses nine right there.
And, you know, this is, this is going to be an issue because
Yep.
Over here, there's also no pedestrian refuge because of the left turn lane, so that's why the pedestrian crossings on this side. But this is, there's not really, I'm just, I'm a little worried about how that's going to work in terms of ultimately, because
The same, the same issue at that intersection and actually, as somebody who walks a lot around town, I'm just, I know the tendency for pedestrians is to take the shortest possible route. So if you put a cross, a crosswalk up higher, because people are going to want to take that inside curve.
Yeah, no, no, that
They're not going to want to go up and around and then across.
That I agree with. This is where that crossing is.
I know.
Yes.
But can you put it on the south side?
That's up to DOT, really.
So the thought is to move it here and then do that, then cross here, then go over. Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, we have to remember, this is not, we're looking at this in isolation. There are buildings proposed over here too, so
Right.
You know, it's, it's, right now, it would just be that they may not want to walk that way.
But maybe do the inside curve now and the other one as the proposed for the future.
So bring it here too?
Yeah.
Okay, that's for you guys to consider. I think that might be a better idea, to be honest with you. I mean, it's a, it's a problem that we want you to have, that there will be so many people walking back and forth across the way that they need to use both sides of the sidewalk. Then that brings me to my, so I, I hope I summarized everything. You guys are going to think about the trails, how you want to integrate this, consider doing the sidewalk over there with a crosswalk there.
Okay.
I think we have a better idea now of how you're going to fit into the larger concept plan. You may be changing this road, it's up to you. Again, we're trying to save you money down the line too, so you don't have to keep redesigning stuff. We've discussed maybe the ODA, those were my really only agenda items. So now the fun stuff, because I am chair. Are we ready for circulation at our next meeting?
So I just picked this up today. It was only dropped off on Friday.
Yes, yeah, we revised, you revised the EAF.
Assuming all the changes that were requested were made, I don't see any issue with it.
Pete?
Yeah, I did have an opportunity to go through it. I sent Michael and Victoria an email. You know, our prior comments, you know, were done. The only thing that, you know, I noticed when I went and looked at section 2.0, I think it's land use and zoning.
Yep.
I think you could talk more about the 150-foot buffer and that you're going to need, that you're going to need a variance for at least the sewage treatment plant structure. So I think you should add that in there. And I don't know, and again, maybe we don't need to have all that in there, but I don't think it's been like decided yet whether, you know, the walls or the signs are, I mean, or maybe it has, I don't know.
Ms. Moss is here, and walls or structures under our code? It's the way it is.
Walls and signs are structures under our code.
So, so, you know, I think maybe that section, and I think that's, I think that's, that's the only thing, that we just mentioned in section 2.0, that we have the 150-foot structure setback and you will need, you know, variances for the items that we just talked about.
Okay.
And then, you know, if Victoria has anything, but you'll, you'll let them, you'll let them know. But that's the only thing that I saw.
Okay.
Other than that, I think that we're good.
So the way that the calendar works in our, our favor, we actually have like three weeks before the next meeting, so that's why I, our administrative assistant, Ms. Whitman, is so efficient and so on top of things, she hand-carried Friday afternoon down the revised EAF, so I could read it immediately, which I did. So that's why I'm bringing up, I think we're ready to circulate and ready to really get this started now. And that, I'm getting goosefleshed, it's exciting me. Well, no, I know you guys still have a ways to go with some small things, but I feel like we're 90% there, to be honest with you, for me. So we, when I say 90% there, I'm talking about our review. You've already, you've taken the step of circulating to DEC and to DOT. This will trigger now the formal that we want them, their responses back within certain dates. And I will hope that because they've had the revised studies, that they'll be ready to not just say, yeah, we consent, but actually provide us with some guidance. If not, I'll be on the phone asking for it to find, to get real responses, because that's what I want. That's what we need before we can move on, so.
We did hear back from DOT, they said they should be done their review by the end of this month and have comments to us, first to second week in September.
That's fantastic.
Yep.
If everyone, it's, there's some sad things. I mean, the level of service, just everybody knows that these, right here, if you're chinking left or right, is going to be E. There's nothing worse. But DOT may suggest mitigation ways to mitigate that, I'm not sure. This is at full build-out though. This is, I mean, I'm talking full.
Right.
Full build-out. I'm just saying, at that point, there may be other ways to bring this up. Yeah, E is, oh. And again, we don't, they're adhering to the approved concept plan, but, you know, there may be some other changes as you go by. As, full disclosure again, Councilman Swinson, who's deputy supervisor, me and Chad are meeting with a Saki manufacturer tomorrow, maybe? So there's a lot of marketing that you guys are still doing, so there may be more elements coming in through here as we go. So anybody else, do you have any comments based on what you heard tonight?
I think these were great suggestions and I think particularly the suggestion that we come in with materials and colors.
It'll make
I found myself that the whiteness of the port seems a brighter white than the whiteness elsewhere. I think they're intended to be the same shade, but I think if we start seeing the real materials, it's going to make a huge difference. I don't know if being on for September 6th for another substantive discussion would require us to submit in a week. There's no way we can do that.
No, no.
So this would just be for circulation and then as soon as we can get a meaningful submission to you, we'll submit that for a following
You got me.
Okay? But thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean for you to turn a dime because you have one extra week.
Yeah.
And by the way, Bill, it was
We thought we'd just drink more coffee.
More doughnuts, more coffee! Yeah. I can see, we can phone all-nighter here for you, yeah. At any rate, Bill, you were here a month ago, not just two weeks ago, because it took you a while to implement these changes. Want to make sure
It was two weeks just for a submit, that's what I want.
And, and just so you know, since we seem to have a better idea now of the basic layout, et cetera, the chairman at this point, according to our bylaws, I get to help control when the submissions are made. And so we need two weeks minimum before the first and maybe second, because we're still looking, you know, magnifying glasses. But once you're at what I call in the pipeline, then if you need extra time, just say so, just ask me. Because usually 10 days is enough. And if we're by the very end and there's just some minor tweaks, seven days is plenty, believe me. So, because somebody will have a chance to review it and we're pretty collegial here and trust each other, as you heard tonight. So we'll schedule you for September 6th to consider circulation and for lead agency, et cetera?
So, and it's up to the applicant whether they want the full team here just for that or if they're wanting to get their stuff in the discussion.
We're not going to have substantive discussions. We already had that tonight, I think. So depending on who you want to have here, you don't have to drive in.
We'll just have a skeleton team and, and we'll just have those little munchkins, right?
Okay, I want to thank everybody for their candor and
One last thing.
Chad, for coming? Yeah?
I wanted to ask, Tom, do we have these?
Well, that was the original.
Yeah, it was the original.
Okay, this is, this is different than what we have.
Chris, can you go through the one, the trail thing? Does that look familiar?
So that is just the bike paths.
Right.
And this was, I mean, I'm going on memory, this was an original design for bike, bike paths and pedestrian movement that wasn't part of that, I mean, it was, it was an interim version. And is that what you recall?
Yeah.
So, because this is taken direct, what I gave you for the trails was taken directly out of the FEIS.
Yes, okay.
So that was what was finally adopted.
So we'll show how similar is this plan, how we integrate into
I mean, for that matter, these bike paths, if you look, you can see where the wetland complex is here.
Yep.
And if you recall, in the FEIS, even though these are not mapped by the DEC, it's recognized that they are, it's, they're DEC wetlands because they're connected.
Yep.
So one of the reasons I think why these were not finally shown is because these were all in the adjacent areas.
Right.
And you can sometimes have recreational uses that are more like strolling, but a bike, if you have a path where you compound the soil, they're not going to allow it, or you have to get a permit. So that's why a lot of this wasn't adopted.
Are they paved or gravel or?
Anything, if you use a mountain bike and it starts compacting the soil, that's considered to be dangerous to the adjacent area or buffer for a wetland. You're compacting the soil, so you're changing hydrology, et cetera.
Even if it's just dirt.
Even if it's just dirt.
It's the same as being
It's the same, so that's why they're, they're a little more restrictive about that. So that's why that got dropped.
All right, so
No.
Do I need to revise EAF and resubmit it based on Pete's comments?
Let me, let me take a look at it.
Okay.
See if I have any other comments. It may be that we just need to change a page.
That's what I was thinking, it's just
The pages don't need to be submitted.
Well, although you might have to come in and do these if Cynthia doesn't have to.
We have a couple interns working with us.
Okay!
Excellent.
They can come work on-site if they need to. Or just take ours back and then put the new ones in there, so, but I know these are small costs, but there's never any reason to waste resources. I'd rather it go into the landscaping and the building, honestly.
Right.
But that's where the bang for the buck, you get it.
All right, so we'll wait for your comments and we'll make any adjustments.